Fuck her.
Okay, but Bones, okay. I know, I, I, listen, I get, I get that shit, but one, Bones, I mean, are you gonna argue against that?
Please, I don't know what it is with, I, I don't know what it is with, with you and the mayor and his wife. You have some soft spot for him.
No, what I'm saying-
It's, it's something. I don't know what it is with you.
Yeah, because they actually get shit done.
But you don't see what they're doing.
Because-
Yeah, their only thing that they're getting done is lowering our PD, our PD budget and holding it over our head in traffic stops. So they can try and get out of stuff. The guy is a tyrant, man.
Oh, my lord. You think because of a damn traffic stop?
I think he's that petty.
I mean, I, look, the mayor is the mayor. I would agree. Here, here, I'm getting all this out now. Okay.
But what is it? Uh, what do you see that he's doing that's so, so good?
I mean, he got that damn legislation passed.
That did what? Which legislation?
Oh, please, I know what you're doing.
I'm presenting that today, like thirty minutes.
Alright.
Okay, so that's why you don't see no, any wrong with the mayor's.
Okay.
Because he wanted to approve that, I'm guessing.
No, it's not that. It's not the mayor's decision. But what it is, it's the council's decision.
He has two seats in.
Yeah, so do what you need to do and then do the right thing.
Yeah, but then here's the thing. What if you can, what if you can find a way to convince him that, hey, because here's the thing, his term's over in about a month anyway. So there ain't no point in, in, you know, going for the throat against a guy who's, whose term is, is over in what? Actually, I think it's less than a month, right? Like, you wanna play politics, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta play politics right, okay? Don't go for the throat on something that's about to end. What you wanna do is you wanna find out who's running the next election and you wanna, you wanna put yourself in a position to where you can make sure the PD isn't a good light within, right?
Well, who is? Do you know anybody?
I know Siobhan is, and I know Siobhan's been a big supporter of us.
Oh, fuck no.
Hey, that's a different sort of the same fucking coin there.
Yeah, I mean, he, he's supposed to be the cheapest staff for her.
Right?
So it's gonna be same shit.
Yeah, I mean, didn't-
But here's the thing, he's supposed to do whatever she says.
She also just twisted my fucking words yesterday in the meeting.
Yeah, and also wasn't fuck, uh, fuckface, uh, what's her name? Juno supposed to be chief of staff? A couple of weeks-
I arrested her last night.
Yeah.
And then a couple of weeks later, FOIA'd and Siobhan was the cheapest staff.
Listen, the big thing is, we gotta, we can play politics, but don't, whenever it's a, you know, it's a meeting between everybody, every one of us. You know, don't, don't act like they have a blind eye to him, right?
If you're gonna be here, get in a uniform.
Alright, Cletus, listen, oh, everybody, all things aside, we, we literally have seen a decrease in officers on duty because they're going off duty to work second jobs to make money. This isn't right.
Yes, but also-
Go ahead, Bones.
That is a point, and that is, I think, the biggest, strong point that we could use, because they could be like, oh, whatever, this, this, and this, as an excuse.
I can, I can hear the mayor's counterpoint. I can hear him.
Well, what do you think? Yeah, what do you think the counterpoint is?
Counterpoint is going to be, oh, so they have to make sure they're being paid well to do their job instead of just, you know, protecting the city.
And the answer is yes, they can't afford-
Yeah, because we're putting our fucking lives on the line.
Every single day to sacrifice, right?
Well, where, where's Dakota? Cause, cause Dakota is-
This wasn't a, this meeting wasn't about this at, at first, and it kinda just-
Kinda turned into, yeah. Well, cause here's the thing, is Dakota, Dakota's our mouthpiece, right? So these are, these are all issues.
Sure, dude, aren't you in the political position too?
I mean, not necessarily. For me, it's, it's more with the people than, than it is with the council. So-
The council meeting's already begun.
Well, who votes, right?
A council meeting starts in twenty minutes.
Mm-hmm.
I'll call Dakota and tell him to come here.
What are we achieving? What are we trying to achieve here, though?
Just give them a game plan of what we all think.
I think he knows.
Just come to my office.
Uh, Dakota is, no, I already spoke to Dakota prior to storm. He, he already knows.
Well, it's like everybody, hike, all of hike commander now in shift two is, is here.
Lovely. Can't wait to see y'all. I'm in my-
Okay. Alright, let's, let's take a, let's take a food, uh, let's take a field trip to Dakota's office real quick. You guys know where that is?
Yeah, I know.
Okay, follow me. I know where it is. Hmm, thirty-two.
Uh, alright, what else did we wanna cover? I'm sorry.
What, what is our tax rate?
We, it's four percent. We would've been making six hundred, or seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. We're no longer making seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. We're making how much? So there was an eighty-eight dollar decrease.
Four, four percent? Four percent would be six eighty, six seventy-two, not six eighty-four. So-
Eight hundred.
Can we get another unit? Can we get one here in the back?
Zero, four. The thirty-two, eight hundred minus thirty-two.
Hundred minus thirty-two?
Is seven sixty-eight.
No, but I, I made seven eighty-four in one hour.
You made seven eighty-four in one, one hour?
Yeah.
Not in the last two days.
Last night, no, six eighty-four, excuse me, sorry.
Six eighty-four, so we're saying it got lower?
Yeah.
So currently, we have a decrease in people being on duty so that they can live. Uh, and we're talking about people that are in, you know, homes that have multiple people in them. Uh, or to even afford, uh, vehicle repairs, or even to purchase their own PD vehicle. They're taking up second jobs and, uh, they're not on duty. So that's kind of where we are. And, and I know that he'll say, we'll just recruit more. Yep, but they're gonna be hit with the same issues.
Yeah.
Well, and then you come with the cost of the academy. Anticipating, I know what the answer's gonna be, but again, I will still ask all the questions. Um, I don't really know at this point if, uh, it'll depend on what, uh, what Crane says. But he seems to have been, uh, in line with this the whole time, uh, as far as the new budgetary things. I don't know if he's aware of all the changes that were made, but I'll find out.
All I'm gonna say is if our pay has been decreased, which we're all believing our math is correct, our pay was decreased.
Yeah.
There was no notification. Nobody told us. Nothing.
I mean, he threatened it to me, he threatened it to me nights ago, but I didn't think that he would actually do it. Yeah, because essentially, uh, Matt was giving him a really hard time, and they had some, like, screaming match in the motor pool, and then he made some, like, kinda ominous call to me afterwards, like, basically, I don't remember the exact verbiage, but something along the lines of, like, he, he proposed the idea of decreasing pay to see how people felt about it.
Yeah, and Bones said the same thing, that he-
In my traffic stop, yeah, he, he mentioned pretty much the same thing along the line of, hey, you think you could survive on five hundred dollars, you know?
The problem is, it's had the reverse effect. We've got people going off duty to work other jobs. So that affects the city, and if he is the mayor of this city, and he is concerned about this city, he, he won't decrease our pay with absolutely no communication.
Oh, yeah, I don't, are you up to date on all the tax changes? Cause I can give you a TLDR in one sentence.
Me? No, this is the first I'm hearing of any of this.
Uh, taxes have been cut eighty-five percent across the board. Uh, let me tell you-
I'm sorry, what?
Uh, general tax was cut from ten percent to four percent. Fuel tax was cut from ten percent to one percent. Vehicle tax was cut from ten percent to one percent. Property tax was cut from ten percent to one percent. Oh, get ready, this is the best part, and I apologize before I say this. Uh, power subsidy to citizens was upped from eight percent to forty percent. That is a five hundred percent increase in the amount of money that the government will now be paying to the citizens to pay for their electricity.
What?
But our pay just got cut.
We should be making at least twelve hundred dollars an hour.
Excuse me.
I mean, I, I mean, hell, I'd love that. But, okay, so, but here's the thing. This is what I propose. We, we all, we, go ahead.
Pretty much everybody's expenses, as long as they're spending a decent amount of time on duty, to where they can't complain. If they are, they're just, just work more. That's pretty much it. But, he kinda just laughed it on.
Yeah, I'm just gonna have to go in there and ask a lot of questions and, and see what anyone says, because it, it, I'll be honest, sir. It sounds like he doesn't give a shit at all, and he's just gonna do whatever he wants, and unless the, unless the state is gonna do something about it, uh, I'm gonna get as much information as we can.
He has no oversight at all when it comes to changing it. He doesn't respond to anybody.
I mean, here, here's, here's what I'm saying. We gotta, we gotta articulate those points I was bringing up. Cause here's how it's perceived, is we're just complaining, instead of, okay, these are the things that's causing us to, to feel bad about our pay, right? So we'll go through, list them things off about how inflation in the city, people are making more money for, for-
Are they, though?
Less work, whatever. We talked about our costs. We talked about our expenses. We talked about people going off duty. We talked about not being able to arrest more people to make money off of our commission, right? So we just write this shit down, bring it up.
No, impeachment has to go to, go to the docket. You have to post it to the docket. You can't vote on it.
People hear shit and they think you're complaining, even though you have, like, a really damn good point, but it, you, they, they don't wanna listen. They choose not to listen to what you're saying. Yeah. So it's, people believe what they believe, and then unless they are convinced otherwise, it's not gonna happen, instead of hearing you out. So, I mean, shit, I'll start writing shit down even.
I mean, the, the obvious points are, our numbers are down.
People in the LSPD that are working tirelessly, um, that absolutely love the city just like-
He's not gonna get impeached either way. We already know that.
Um, however, it is ta, it is finally taking a toll on people. And, and we have people of seniority that are now, cannot afford to live on the paycheck.
Yeah, absolutely. I will bring all that up. Uh, Chief?
It's on this thing where he-
Yeah.
Uh, as far as, uh, Cornwood's presentation to go, you're, you're good on that?
I mean, like, to what extent are you asking?
I mean, he's gonna, he's gonna present his, his, his-
The, uh, the document.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. Uh, if there are financial implications in that, what's, he said you were good with it, but if there's financial implications, what would you like, uh?
I, we can't do it.
Yeah, I mean, if, if they're gonna, if they're gonna, yeah, if they're gonna ask for money for that shit, yeah.
If they fund it, they can do it. But if they ask us to fund it, then go fuck themselves.
What document?
We can't.
Uh, uh, check, check your email.
The document-
Yeah, that was a-
The document I'm being sent right now at this minute.
Yeah, that's actually why I walked into the room originally, and then we started talking about something else. Cause I, I was, I was looking for you, actually, cause I wanna show it to you.
Am I the only person that doesn't know about this?
Um, yeah, cause, cause it, it didn't get okayed basically until yesterday at, like, the eleventh hour. So I, I, I showed it to Dakota again a little while ago, and then, uh, I was looking for you, and then that's why I came in the, that's why I came in the meeting. Or came in the meeting room whenever y'all were in there in the first place, cause I was looking for you.
So, so who okayed this? You and Barrick?
Uh, Slacks has seen it, um, Dakota's seen it.
Captain, Captain Slacks, Dakota, Officer Dakota has seen it, okay?
A food by chance, sorry. Go ahead, Ruby.
And, and how long have you all had this document?
This, this one's been around for a long time. Cause that, cause they, they asked me to, well, they, they asked me to present the sheriff's office. Ready to present it like six weeks ago. And then it just, every week, it's been like, okay, hold on, just wait, just wait. And then last night at the eleventh hour, I was basically told, okay, you can present tomorrow. Like, even before the old legislation, everything. So this is like old, yeah, so they didn't tell me until the last second, basically, that I, that I'm good to go to present tomorrow.
Yeah, I heard he was presenting when he talked to me, like, well, like an hour ago, Cornwood, in the locker room.
I, I don't even have words, anyway. I, I just, I'm just left out of the loop, okay?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is like old, old shit that ended up getting buried for a long time. Like, it's, I was actually actively looking for you today, when I came on duty, cause I wanted to go over with you, and then, then turned into the pay conversation.
I've been on duty all week, yeah.
Well, I know, but I, I didn't get the, uh, I didn't get the okay to present it until last night. Yeah, cause every, yeah, every, every week, it's like, okay, just hold on, and then they didn't tell me until literally the last second.
And, and so you wanted to get approval to present it before, uh, obviously, I'm the only one that doesn't know, before letting me know, okay?
Ruby, kick that motherfucking ass and get us some, get us some money.
No, I'm not gonna call him the names that you called him. I'm, I'm not-
You can leave that. You can leave the terrorists, Tommy, whatever you wanna, you know, all the-
Okay, hold on, that's, I mean, to be fair, he was a terrorist, that's basically what's-
He's a fucking tyrant, let me tell you. No, he is. Pop off, Ruby, alright?
Where are you missing?
Malton.
He said he's not gonna be here.
Oh, well, then we're ready. Which council meeting is this?
Nine?
Nine? Isn't it eight? I think it's eight, isn't it?
Oh, god, nine. Last two was eight.
Oh. Shit.
Uh, let's thin the crowd. Andy Jones, please step forward.
Okay, do you want the speedrun version, or, or, or the actual TLDR?
Uh, first, why don't you, uh, tell us a little bit about your accolades?
My accolades? Hello, I'm Andy Jones, former three-time champion mayor. I now live in Polito, and we wanna build that up as a town. That's going slowly but surely.
Did you ever embezzle money as the mayor?
You know what? I didn't. I think I was one of the very few, very, very, very clean mayors.
You were. Please continue.
The forty-eight contestants competing in challenges and games created by yours truly until there's only one left standing to win the grand prize. The forty-eight contestants will be randomly divided into teams of six. Two of these teams will compete on Monday, another two teams on Tuesday, and so on through Thursday. On each of these days, the teams will compete in five challenges. The team that wins the most challenges out of the five will then compete in a three-v-three internally, and the three winners will move on to return on Friday for five more games that are now individual-based instead of team-based. The games on Friday will see the competitors slowly eliminated until we have our winner. Entry fee for this event is two thousand dollars each, and all of the proceeds will be going towards the purchasing of the warehouse in Polito, which I intend to turn into what you could call a Polito event center, where I would own the space, provide all of the furniture, and not only run my own events there, but also hopefully down the line with approval from the council and business licenses and all that. Be able to rent this space out to others who are wanting to create fun and collaborative events or games for the city. My ultimate goal is to use the space to promote the most amount of events and fun, which should be easy enough, especially with fifty K. I think that's enough money to get people interested in the event, but not so much to break the economy.
Uh, yep, you have, that's precisely what we would be concerned about, so, yeah, I, I thi, I think that number's fair.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Yeah, I don't think it's like a life-changing amount of money, but it's still enough of a chunk for people to go, ooh, fifty K.
Yeah, the, like, this sort of thing, I, I feel like we don't need Fed approval for. Uh, I think it's, it's more than fair to provide that amount of money for you because you are a trusted individual who has done this sort of thing before multiple times even. Um, so i, if the treasurer would like to meet with you after the meeting, uh, to get all that set up, or maybe do it right now, if she wants to, if she thinks everything's above board, then uh, I think we're all in agreement, by the sound of it.
Yeah, perfect.
Uh, Cletus Cornwood, why don't you have a seat, actually? If you can squeeze in there.
Where's Malton?
Malton is, uh, woefully absent at present. It's a very, very draining thing being a council member, you know, so sometimes we just can't make the meetings.
Okay. I mean, I, I don't mind standing.
Okay, fuck it. Alright, so, Cletus Cornwood is here to talk about something near and dear to his heart, something that he has been working on presumably for months now. Uh, this isn't a guarantee that it will happen, but rather, uh, I would like to see the fruit of his labors, and I would like for it all to be known to the council at large.
Please. Uh, well, first things first, is, what, what's the best way that I can, uh, share my, my document with y'all?
Hmm.
Uh, send it to me, and then I'll put it in our council document.
Okay.
Fashionably light.
Dogtown, hey, where's Bobby Charles, that piece of shit?
Ah, he worked hard last night. He's taking the day off. We subbed two, two intruders we did. It was beautiful. You would've loved him, Mayor Max.
Um, no, I heard about it.
Oh, you did?
I, I honestly, I kinda loved it, kinda didn't love it, but, you know, we, we got a, we got a new precedent set, which is, uh, you know, no cops go into Dogtown anymore, forever.
Hallelujah.
Uh, yeah, so, um, now, a lot of this stuff was written in the past, um, but, uh, but a lot of it still, a lot of it still stands, uh, basically. You know, uh, long story short, I mean, shit, I'll just go over the whole damn thing.
Yeah, just read it, bro.
Oh, well, okay. Howdy, esteemed mayor and honorable members of the city council. As a proud son of the great state of Texas, and a firm believer in the law of the land in our cherished city of Los Santos, I reckon it's high time I had a word with y'all with a heavy heart. I come before y'all to speak out against the, uh, misguided ways of the LSPD when it comes to our sheriff's office, okay? Now, I know, listen up, there's been a whole heap of trouble brewing up in our neck of the woods up north, okay? There's been crime running rampant through the northern stretches, including regions around the Alamo Sea and the Polito Bay, and thus, uh, law-abiding folks find ourselves caught in the crossfire, okay?
Pause, pause.
I got a phone call the other night from a concerned little Billy. He was like, Mayor, can you please, can you please put an end to the, the shit juice that my mommy is drinking, cause she's blind now and she can't take care of me? Moonshine is ruining our communities!
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Well, I mean, a little bit would be okay, but the problem is, it's unregulated, and there's, you know, people are drinking too much of it. Regardless, don't matter how I grew up, but what does matter is where we are now. So, look, I think it's important that, you know, we go ahead and we, uh, we take our, our, ourselves, okay, who have gotten caught in the crossfire, vulnerable to the whims of these no-good outlaws who, they, you know, they ride roughshod all over us, okay? They know full well that there ain't no sheriff in sight to keep them in check. So it's time that we took matters into our own hands and brought some semblance of law and order back to our community. Okay, so my plan is to establish a satellite operation. So that's gonna be the sheriff's office right up there in Sandy Shores, you know, I call it the Little Alamo. And that is gonna be our first step toward reclaiming our safety and protecting our way of life. So we wanna bring justice to our doorstep, scare off them varmints, you know, round up the wrongdoers and ensure the safety of our kinfolk. All right, mark my words, the Little Alamo ain't just a building, but it's gonna be a beacon of hope for our community. A testament to our unwavering commitment to doing right by our neighbors. It's gonna give our local lawmen the tools and the backbone that they need to stand tall and defend the good folks of the Alamo Sea area and beyond. So, you know, I'm, 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 I ain't saying that it's gonna be easy, but there, there's gonna be some hurdles and challenges to face, but I reckon that we're up to the task. So I implore y'all, esteemed leaders to our great city, to stand with us in our fight for justice and lawfulness, and make sure the Little Alamo sees the light of day for the betterment of all of us.
Hey, he's been a loss for the increase in the government now, bro.
So in closing, I'd like to band together with grit and determination as we set on this noble mission to secure a brighter and safer future for our community. Together, we're gonna stamp out the courage of, or, excuse me, the scourge of crime and pave the way for a Los Santos that we can all be proud to call home. You know, up there in Little Texas. So the utmost respect and the steadfastness of resolve, it's, uh, from me. Cletus Cornwood, Esquire.
Okay, que, questions. Bootlegging, huge problem. Huge problem right now. Massive freaking problem.
Mm-hmm.
Can you guys do me a quick, solid, the cops in the room, uh, go through and try to, when's the last time you guys caught a bootlegger?
Uh, I mean, I have a pending investigation on one. It's, uh-
Sure.
But, but he hasn't had the charges pressed on.
Okay, that doesn't count.
Well, I, I don't know if you wanna hear this, uh-
We, we could talk about it after, probably.
Do I know it? Okay, skip that then. It's your grandson. Fucking weeb.
Oh.
Yeah, there's these two officers that are, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it after.
Alright.
Uh, one thing I will say is, uh, without the bootlegging, though, we, uh, we find a shitload of stills all over the city.
Oh, nice.
Like, I, I can personally vouch that we had at least a couple within the last week, off the top of my head, that were ten-plus stills I know that were found at locations.
Nice. How much moonshine do those produce anyways? Anyone know? Like, one still? Like, how much, how much shit juice is that pumping out?
Personally, I have not run any science experiments on it, so-
What do y'all do with them when you find them?
Blow them up, right?
Yeah, we destroy them.
Yeah, we look at the contents. We make sure, uh, is it active? Is there anything inside? And make sure we remove anything, uh, and then we destroy it.
Nice. For, for the purpose of record-keeping, can you guys start keeping track of, like, when you do that, by the way?
Oh, yeah, we do.
Yeah, there's, there's, I'm looking at the reports now. I can give you, like, there's, okay, so I said there haven't been a lot of arrests recently, but it seems like that's because they've been finding a lot of stills. So from the time when the last bootlegging arrest was, they found fifteen reports about stills found and destroyed.
Nice. Well, that's sick.
The problem is getting cut off at the manufacturing level, and that's why the arrests have probably dropped.
Uh, we got the honorable Chief of Police and the Honorable Assistant Chief of, Chief of Police in the room right now. How would you guys rate your efficacy of the, your guys' county patrol right now? I would like ten. Could it be better? Could it be worse?
Chief, you want me to? Uh, for, for me-
I think it certainly be, oh, go ahead.
Uh, for me, uh, it could be better. However, we release officers to go to certain areas within the city, depending on numbers that are on duty. So if there are enough numbers to keep the actual central of Los Santos under control, then we release people to Polito, to Cypress Flats, up into Sandy, wherever needs our attention.
Wait, where's Cypress Flats?
It's by the old tow yacht off of Sushambles, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
We're all the new construction, uh, so it's just went up just south of there.
Yeah, so the, the spots move, the hotspots move all over the city for crime.
Would you guys, uh, like, I'd like to be onboarded as a cop, so I can kinda like watch this for a day and see how it goes. You know, like the, the, the fucking dispatch reports and reports of cops.
Is specifically moonshine or just everything?
Everything. I just wanna see what it looks like on your guys' end.
Onboarded, or do you just wanna a day ride along?
Uh, onboarded.
Oh, like MDT XS?
Yeah. Um, I will say, actually, no, I don't have to say that. Yeah, I can look through those reports if I want. That's apart from what we're presenting, or what is being presented right now, though. Do you have anything else you wanna say about the Little Alamo Sheriff's Office, Cletus Cornwood?
I, I wanna talk about the bullet points. That doc is really an introductory document. It ain't about all the specifics of the behind the scenes, but it's, it's essentially, shit, I'll just go over the damn thing.
Yeah, read it out loud.
The next thing I wanna talk about is the establishment of the Little Alamo Sheriff's Office. As an active member of the community here, and a very staunch advocate for public safety, myself, Cletus Cornwood, Esquire, fixing to pitch here this proposal to, to advocate for the establishment of the, the Little Alamo Sheriff's Office in Sandy Shores. So there has been a, I say, I mean, hell, recent surge, but in reality, it's been, this, this shit's been going on for a while now. Uh, major, major amounts of criminal activities. We talked about the moonshine going up, uh, people robbing shit, illegal marijuana operations. There is all kinds of shit going on up there. And I think we should beef up the law enforcement in that area and, and really treat that area as a forward operating base, okay? We open up that sheriff, sheriff's office, we're gonna rope in crime, we're gonna protect citizens and ensure the safety and well-being of all the residents of Los Santos. These are the goals. We're gonna kick off the renovations of the Little Alamo Sheriff's Office to give law enforcement the tools to operate and process individuals. So what does this mean? This means that we need to give law enforcement the green light to park and fetch their police vehicles up there with the valet service. We gotta give the law enforcement the chance to clock in, clock out of duty. That's something that's already available. We gotta, you know, set up the damn, you know, microphone, all the information in the interrogation room, so it all works good. We gotta give dispatch and other administrative positions there at the, uh, at the sheriff's office the ability to do their job when they're needed up there. We gotta stock up the armory. We gotta set up our, our forensics labs so that we can swipe for DNA, and we can, we can run that shit. We can put it in our serial number system if we're registering weapons so that we can safely operate from both inside and outside of the sheriff's office. And we gotta give the jail cells the capacity to hold more than one criminal at a time. I do think there's a little bit of renovation that building, the, the building is gorgeous, don't get me wrong, but I think there's a little bit of renovation that building needs that I could, I expand on if y'all want me to, but there's some of that as well. Point two, we gotta strengthen the collaboration and the coordination between the law enforcement there and the community to tackle the security concerns and to put in place some preventative measures. Presence is our first level of force, and if there ain't no presence, then people are criminals, are gonna feel like they can just do whatever the hell they want, not get in trouble. Next, we gotta deliver more prompt and efficient law enforcement services to folks in businesses in the northern regions, including Sandy Shores, Polito and the surrounding areas. I mean, shit's happening up there. People got houses up there. I'm damn sure, I know Mr. Simone, you live up in Polito, uh-
Correct.
And Siobhan, you live in, uh, you live off of Route sixty-eight in Harmon, you know? If some shit happens at y'all's houses, then y'all are gonna wanna have law enforcement capable of being able to respond quickly. Not only that, but if some shit happens, they can find a suspect, take him to the sheriff's office, even if they're part of the LSD, LSPD or the sheriff's office, it don't matter. But that building is open and operational so that we can process folks up there, instead of having to go all the way down MRPD and then all the way back up. Which then increases the wear and tear to our vehicles, increasing our costs. It also reduces the amount of time that we are out there on patrol, which again, reduces our presence, which again, leads to more crime happening to good people in this city. It's all a snowball effect. A bunch of these little changes is gonna help to strengthen the entire community, okay, and really focus on community policing by building a positive relationship between law enforcement and the residents there. That's gonna promote trust, cooperation, there's gonna be a mutual respect. So we need to go out there and let's roll out proactive strategies and initiatives-
Shortened by having the, the sheriff's office.
You wanna beef up that patrol, you wanna keep an eye of surveillance?
I think that's what he was saying.
Have targeted enforcement operations. Let's set up a sting op. Now, like, uh, like-
The problem is, he's saying all this stuff that we could do anyway in LSPD, but-
We're currently not really capable to do that all the time because there's shit happening in the city, and we gotta, you know, we gotta make sure units are down there, and we gotta keep that presence in the city. However, part of the reason why that's such a strong point, that we have to keep units in the city, is because if we do have to respond to something up north, then
Only one of those places is an actual business.
By going back and forth and all that shit, that it, uh, it reduces our presence overall, and then it makes it where we can't take that risk.
When he introduces his operating a business without a licensed legislation, so that's only one business.
So, so being able to go up there, process a guy, send it back, is way the hell more efficient for everybody. And hey, sure as shit, I mean, we talked about folks living up there. I think- And hey, sure as shit, I mean, we talked about folks living up there. I think, um, I ain't gonna put words in y'all's mouths, but I think you'd probably be lying, Mr. Simone, if you didn't want to have a nice diner or some, some restaurants, some, some shit up there in Palito for you to be able to go and grab a bite to eat instead of having to come all the way down the city to go get some senior buns and some stuff at the food plaza, right?
Wait, what? Where, when, hold on.
Well, when I, no, what I'm saying is.
I thought you were talking about Sandy Shore's Sheriff's Office.
Sure, but I mean, it's, it's gonna work as a forward operating base for us to be able to respond more quickly to shit up north regardless. Whether it's in Sandy Shores, Palito, Grape Seed, whatever it is. So now instead, so now it reduces the amount of time that we have to drive in order to be able to go and process somebody.
Or restaurant Palito.
Well, what I'm saying is businesses are gonna happen, ain't they? I mean, there's gonna, somebody is gonna be do, having a business up in, up in Palito at some point. So it's closer to go to Sandy from Palito, or if somebody's gonna have some kind of business up in Sandy, um, surely at some point that's gonna happen, right?
Uh, I think what Cornwood is trying to say is that the increased police presence is going to, uh, build up the community so that businesses will want to open there eventually. Correct me if I'm wrong, Cornwood.
Right, yeah, exactly. Cause I, I mean, am I wrong here? Regardless of whenever shit does or doesn't happen.
Wrong about what?
My point is, is that people need to feel safe, whether there's businesses up there or whether there's people living up there.
Yeah, one, one day.
Yeah.
Yeah, someday.
Regardless, regardless of all that shit, my point is, is if we have a place up there that we can help people, to, so we can go up there, we can process folks, all that shit. This, this whole idea of, of the sheriff's office opening, it ain't some damn division where we're gonna split our numbers in two or any of that. It is, let's open up the office, let's have a sheriff's election, and have a sheriff go open up that office and then they go through the process of let's get the uniforms set up, let's go through the building, you know, make, make a few touch-ups here and there if we need to. Go from there. It's, it's, it's not gonna be like a, hey, overnight, hey, half of the current PD is now part of the sheriff's office and half the current PD is a part of the LSPD and now y'all only patrol here and y'all only patrol there. That's some bullshit, right? I, I think, I think, you know, excuse my language, but I, I think it's pretty clear that that would be some bullshit. It ain't gonna work that way. The way that I foresee this thing playing out, it ain't nothing but an opportunity for, uh, uh, for us to really expand our presence up north and to serve the people of the city better.
So, okay. I, I see what you're saying about it helping to expedite processing, um, and whatnot, but does, uh, creating a new department even, I mean, is it necessary? Can't we just have the building be modified to accommodate what's necessary? I mean, aren't we still trying to bolster the, the roster?
I, I think, I think you make a really good point about building a new department and, you know, moving away from the LSPD. And that's not necessarily what this is. I, I, I'm a big believer in having one unified police department that is, you know, this is, this is one chain of command. You know, you, you are gonna have your sheriff and all that, but, uh, they're, they're gonna work in tandem, they're gonna work together, they're not gonna be, you know, I mean, obviously.
Well, what's the chain of command then?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. How about that break down for you?
Just like a deputy being an officer in the, an officer in the LSPD would be like a deputy in the sheriff's office. You'd have the same sort of coinciding position.
How does the sheriff play in compared to the, yeah?
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, I think the sheriff would probably be on the same level as the, as the chief police. I mean, that, that shit, I'm not, I mean, I'm not a hundred percent.
So it's not a unified chain of command then?
Well, no, they'd work together though. They'd work in tandem. And then eventually, I mean, if I have like a, let's say a lieutenant.
Let it happen. I let it happen.
If I have a lieutenant that.
Listen, I'm gonna just say this, okay?
Like, hey, go do this thing, deputy so and so.
There's a lot of reasons for this not to be a good thing, but there's one reason why it is a good thing.
If there is a, uh, if there is an issue with, uh, an officer and then they have to be striked for it, right? They have to receive a dap, a great word. Then that is something that somebody can push forward as a part of the LSPD. Now, I think all disciplinary action should be talked about amongst, amongst the leadership and they should, uh, they should approach the, the punishment for that individual properly, right? But whether you're, you're LSPD command or BCSO command or LASO command or whatever the hell it's called, I mean, you're, you're still a part of the same chain of command.
Uh, one of your deputies, if you're the sheriff, let's say hypothetically, goes to a scene in the city. And then your deputy, you know, let's say executes a pit maneuver and a command member on scene from the LSPD believes that it was, uh, excessive. And daps them. You, as the sheriff, disagree with that LSPD command member. How does that shake out?
I mean, I, I don't think that command member should be, uh, just putting the punishment forth right then and there. I don't, I don't think that's appropriate. I think, I think the, the command member should, uh, bring it up to the other leadership and say, hey, this happened, how do y'all want to approach this? And I, I do think if somebody is in the city doing some shit, I mean, it, it don't matter where you are, you're still a police, you're still a police officer and whether you're a sheriff, whether you're in the sheriff's office or whether you're in the city, people still are gonna look at you the same way. They, you know, they, hey, that guy's either part of the police department or he ain't.
He's not saying anything.
You're operating with folks in the city.
This doesn't mean anything.
So to me, it's, it's all, it's all one, uh, yeah, I mean, absolutely. Somebody, if somebody does some shit, you know, and.
Cornwood, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, in all fairness, I don't think you answered that question. What, what would happen?
Well, I mean, they'd be, they'd get in trouble for it.
Yeah, but, but who? You said one chain of command. So why does the LSPD command member need to talk to the sheriff's office?
Oh, no, I think they talk to, I mean, they would, they would just, they'd just take it up the chain.
From what, but from what I'm understanding.
Yeah.
Cornwood is saying that basically the, the command member who deems it inappropriate and worthy of punishment would then take it to all of command who would then discuss it. And then they would, uh, dole out the, the punishment as agreed upon by all.
The tiebreaker, the tiebreaker would probably come down to being the department. I, I also think, I mean, this is, the original plan for how I wrote this thing out was under the assumption that we would probably end up having like a commission or something overseeing everything altogether.
Wait, what?
But that's, I mean, that's what I'm saying. That's why when it comes to that side of things, you know, the behind the scenes specifics of that, I'm not a hundred percent dead set on anything. I want to do whatever's best for, for the PD and whatever's best for the city.
So, uh, if sheriff is on the same level as chief of police, would they be enacted in the same way? Would it be names put forth for the federal government to decide? Is that your thought process?
I think the sheriff, I think the sheriff should, should be an election. I mean, that's how they do it in most cities, but that's y'all's decision. That's just, my, my opinion don't matter on that.
It should be election and, and it will be an election.
Uh, internally or, uh?
Uh, depends, I guess.
So, so wait, this is happening?
It depends. Honestly, uh, you said will. Why are we, why are we discussing this if it's already happened? You said it will be an election. Yeah, it will be an election when it happens.
Right, so if it's a when and not an if, then.
And why?
This isn't a pitch, right?
Yeah.
This is an announcement or a pitch?
Cletus Cornwood is describing to all of you right now his vision for a sheriff's office operating out of the center of Los Santos or, uh, San Andreas or whatever, the fucking island. Okay, that's it. Eventually, a sheriff will be elected. These two things are not the same.
What you're saying, like hypothetically.
So a sheriff is happening no matter if we open the office or not.
Uh, yeah, be it of this, of, of the LASO or maybe the BCSO comes back or maybe the.
How did I screw this up?
Sheriff's Office opens up, you know, eventually there will be a sheriff because there needs to be a.
What is so hard to understand about this?
County presence eventually, okay? We can't just have cops operating out of the, the city when there, there is a rampant crime problem on eighty percent of the island.
I mean, nobody's arguing that. It's just we don't, we're, we're trying to understand why, uh, another department is necessary if the LSPD hasn't even been built up yet.
A counterpoint? What does it matter? How do, how does having two different departments even affect anything?
Again, it's not, it's not another.
Confusion.
Adding more cooks in the kitchen.
More cooks in the kitchen is a big one.
How?
Isn't this adding kitchens?
Just like.
Yeah, it's like literally just another kitchen.
Well, that's not what's being described, right? He's saying it's all the same chain of command, so it's not adding kitchens. And if it's adding kitchens, that's a whole other discussion.
Thing of it is franchising. You know, it's like, you know, we have McDonald's here and we have McDonald's there.
We need to franchise a police department that only a couple of weeks ago we were saying completely wasn't functional.
And is the federal government okaying the, uh, funding to make all of this happen or are we, are, are y'all planning on fundraising to have all of that implemented?
The locks have changed up there recently.
There's a few things that I would like to add up there. I, I can, I, I would love to expand on that if, if y'all want me to. But as far as money goes, just the bottom line is this, if, if the, the state doesn't want to help pay for it, I, I mean, that's, we, we, we have a lot of other budgetary issues that, that Dakota can talk about.
Look, the whole, Cornwood, allow me, okay? Pretending up that opening up a sheriff's office is anything more than a cop wearing a different uniform with a different rank title is insane. They, they will continue to work together. County officers will be in, in Los Santos proper, probably assisting with necessary calls. They're gonna be using the same radio frequency, they're probably gonna be getting the same guns from the same armory, uh, so on so forth. This too many cooks in the kitchen shit, it, it just doesn't fly. Once again, this was just Cletus Cornwood presenting his vision for the LASO.
I know when Cornwood.
Because I agree, having, having a, a station further up north would be great and it would help expedite, uh, processing. So, and then that much, I do agree.
I think when Cornwood was originally, originally working on this too was underneath the original iteration of the police continuity plan, which did envision a commissioner, right? Other than a chief of police. So I think that, you know, obviously we need to be, it, it needs some adapting for the current status quo. I just wanted to share that because I know that seems confusing with the chain of command questions, but I, it was, it was conceived underneath the original iteration of the police continuity plan.
Right. Yeah, and I mentioned that earlier. That's why I was saying like the behind, the behind, the, the behind the scenes stuff, that, that stuff we can talk about, you know, internally as part of the police department, how we want to get that figured out.
Right.
But, well, we got two of the, the most important people on the subject in the room right now, fortunately. We got, uh, we got Ruby York, Barrett Johnson. Do you believe that your operations would be impacted negatively by the, the institution of another police department?
Day-to-day basis like operations? No, but from like a structural standpoint, I witnessed what happened years ago and that is my only fear is.
What, what happened years ago?
If there's not a strong enough foundation and you rip away the pillars of said foundation, the whole thing is gonna fall down and you start over.
Who are the pillars? Will have to be hammered out, but it, it, once again, it has no bearing on what Cornwood wanted to present to us. Uh, he, he's a cop, he's a guy, uh, he's an old guy, old cop. Uh, this is his vision for what he could see operating and out of, in and out of Sandy Shores. Uh, and I want to thank you for presenting this to us finally.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Good presentation, Cornwood.
Yeah, I mean, if.
Put a lot of work into this.
Yeah, I mean, if you had more questions about, you know, the, the nitty gritty, just ask me. I can, I can talk about it later.
Will do. Thank you, Cletus.
Thank you.
Uh, Dogtown, what up?
Hi, uh, Cornwood, I love that. I just want to say something. Um, Dogtown would love for the Last Hope to be established. We could use some northern neighbors. It gets quiet up there. Anyway. I've come here today to, to forward a few names. Um, with just two people, now imagine what we could do with ten times that.
Did Bobby find his gun that got robbed on him up there?
Bobby's gun.
Why you got a taser on your, why?
Oh, well, it's, it's, it's not real. It's, uh, I bought it from a toy.
Don't say that.
The real taser's in the prison.
Damn it, Max, Crane's gonna lose his mind.
So, um, does anybody have any, uh, the police, directing this at the police, do you guys have any qualms with how I'm operating the prison? Do you want to get this out the way? Thank you.
I already addressed everything, uh, to catch up the rest of the council. There's been a recent spate of, uh, I don't know what we're gonna call it, uh, confusion, willful ignorance, uh, or maybe just flat out disregard for the policies that we've laid out for both the DOC and the PD to understand. Uh, I've attempted to correct those, uh, confusions, we'll call them. Uh, most recently, there was something where Cornwood and Sultan went into the airlock of the prison with full PD equipment and guns and Bobby and Carmine relieved them of those things, uh, due to other incidents in the past where PD went in with guns and forcibly like took back a baton or some shit, I don't remember. Uh, I've effectively volunteered to mediate any of those disputes in the future. Uh, however, they should not exist.
Mm-hmm. We've got a clear understanding of the legislation. I hope all other parties involved also take a, a double take on it. So they, they know what they can and can't do inside Dogtown. I want to work with you guys. I want to make that clear. I do. I really do. We gotta work together in this city to make things work, whi- which is why I want Cornwood to have his whole Last Hope department thing. Cause I feel like, uh, as northerners, you know, we, we, we get along better. These city folk, they don't understand how we do things out in the boonies.
Yeah, that's a great way to, a great way to put things, Carmine.
Okay, uh, so the list of hopeful, hopeful candidates that I've already approved and now needs your approval. I'll start. Individual number one's name is Chris King. He is a media personality known for flossing on a stage, also plays Fortnite occasionally.
Cool.
I've checked his record. He's.
Yeah, it's pretty extensive.
It's a hell of a record, Jesus.
Holy.
So, uh.
Oh, criminal possession of government equipment?
What, what makes you think, what makes you, what makes you think this zoomer piece of shit is a good fit for the, uh?
Yeah, what?
Oh, uh.
For Dogtown. Just tell me, tell me a little bit about him.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you, I'll tell you. He's great at cranking nineties, he has initiative and he's won a couple world championships. You know, Dogtown has got winners, we could do some more. Maybe we can teach the guys on the outside and I feel like he's got gusto. That's why I want Chris on the team.
Okay, um, does he have any experience?
Yeah, he's killed people.
Really? Yeah, he got reckless endangerment.
Yeah.
So clearly he can care for others.
Assault with a deadly.
Well, a lot of great things that you.
Yeah.
Uh, listen, it takes a man with a broken mind to fix a broken system, in the words of my predecessor, Bass. Okay? Some of these tools I bring to you today, they're not gonna be the best. I understand, you're, you're gonna have, uh, uh, negative opinions about it, but I'm telling you, these people have worked in there with me and I've selected them from a long list of hopeful candidates.
Did you say they've already worked in there?
Uh, yes, pro bono.
Well, yeah, we, this is just to get them hired formally. I mean, cause Carmine and Bobby can let in whoever they want. It's not like, you know?
Yeah, no, that makes sense. But, uh, why should this guy be hired on formally?
Carmen, we're not putting violent felonies on the state payroll, okay?
Okay.
There you go.
Yeah. Okay, uh.
I'm just gonna shut that part down real quick.
You know what? How about this? We're gonna go home, we're gonna go home, we're gonna go to people Mr. The Mayor is familiar with. Brick the wall. You know him, who's part of your security team.
Brick Shitowski?
Brick Shitowski, that's the man.
Does he have any violent felonies?
I don't think so.
He doesn't have a record.
Yeah.
Um.
That's a miracle he doesn't have a record.
Wait, no.
That's because I was his lawyer. Oh, good shit.
Would you like for me to go through the list of why he should get a job?
Well, he's an ex-cop, so I, I.
Yeah, I back him actually.
Well, let's be, let's, let's be clear. Sorry for cutting off, Kinter.
Oh, you're all right.
Our vision for Dogtown does not hinge upon someone's ability to actually like do that job. It's a containment center for people like you, for people like Brick Shitowski, uh, for people who I just don't want to talk to.
I don't want to say Brick's face ever again.
You can call it whatever you want, Carmen, but we're not officially changing the name.
Yeah, I know. You know what? I get it, Mayor. Dogtown was a strain, a sore in your eye, a little piece of fluff that you wanted out the way that was.
No, I love, I, I love, I love Brick. I love Brick. I do.
I think that's actually a really good one, yeah.
But I plan on making it great and I feel like Brick in the equation will make it great. You know, his number one hit single, love song, I don't know if you've heard it, it's beautiful.
I've heard of that. I've fucking heard it, man.
Actually really good.
All right.
I've heard it many times, yes.
So yay on Brick?
My, my vision is right now we, we limit it to like maybe like six guards or something, six paid positions seems like reasonable.
I plan on doing an academy with all these people, so they're not just, I have a whole bootcamp regiment started out, me and Bobby do, okay? So they're not all gonna survive it, so the list will thin itself out, but these are just, you know, just so you guys know, just so I know who you're okay with.
Uh, next one is former security guard, uh, Gary Kabun.
You might have seen him working senior buns as a security operative. No felonies, doesn't even have a record, the man's a fucking ghost. Okay.
Thank you.
All that, thank you.
Yay or nay on him? Do you need any, uh, background? You want me to go into his traits, what he's like?
Let's, let's, let's table this guy for now.
Okay, okay.
What does that mean? I mean, yes?
That means, uh, means you can come talk to us next week.
Set it to the side for it now.
Okay, all right.
You said you only had two names also and it sounds like you're about to say number four.
Four? Hey, get comfortable. I heard these meetings long. Uh, Scotty Bard. He likes feet.
That's the foot guy.
Oh, Scotty the foot?
Guy.
Oh, yeah, get him away, yeah, uh.
Oh, we, we can shove him in the prison, thanks.
Yeah, you want him in there, right, guys?
Yeah.
Yeah. Scotty Triple Dark. You know, since we're going through the list of people we want locked away, you know, out of our, out of our sight, you that are sore on society, I'm gonna throw it out there. Mr. K, come on, guys, let's get a yay.
I said no violent felonies.
No violent felons.
Crane literally just said no violent felons, Carmine.
Yeah, you, you and Bobby.
Yeah, you, you and Bobby. That he shot me, so there you go.
I tried, guys, I fucking tried.
We made an exception for you guys, cause honestly, we felt that you guys had no chance of operating in like normal society. So we were willing to overlook your violent felonies in order to give you this operation, cause we knew that you guys had it in you to make it something great.
Are you proud of us, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I am proud of you, I really am.
We're gonna fail, odds against us, minimalist budget, hey, Cornwood, you could never survive on our budget.
And just, just for the record, uh, Bobby, Bobby did get an expungement, so they actually don't have violent felonies.
Yeah. Fucking sure.
Carmine has none.
Carmine only has a song battery.
Good shit.
Cool.
Neither of them are violent felons now.
Yeah, yeah, we can apply that standard, yeah.
Nice, good, okay, nice.
They hate to see me shining. Next.
No, I love to see you shining, dog.
Chess.
Chastanisberg Andersonisbergensen.
That, yes, that's my boy, I call him Chester.
I really don't like the Swedes.
He's a, he's American, he's American.
Just put Berg in.
You just put Berg, you can find no.
Holy last name.
Chastanisberg Andersonisbergensen, it's not that hard.
Uh, I would be for this guy, uh, my wife and I know him personally, uh, I think he is, he's a good fit for you guys.
He's a perfect fit, absolutely.
Yeah, I've written him a couple times, I can see that.
Next, Villager the Pilliger.
Ooh.
Yeah, I like Villager.
Pilliger, the Pilliger.
I like Villager.
Background on him is, uh.
Oh, he's clean.
Yeah, two five, two five, so.
He doesn't talk much, but I mean, if you just need, you know, a, a guard who will stand there, I think he'd do a great job.
You haven't seen him in action, that's why you say that.
I, I know.
Honestly, I think he'd be good.
I know, I know Villager.
The police force would be lucky if they had him.
Well, he doesn't speak English, so.
I, I'd have you know, me and him have sat in a room and we've talked about the financial and economic status of this world. He's very learned.
You talked to him about it and he said.
You probably spoke at him a lot, yeah.
What are your thoughts on the financial, uh, structure and status of the world then, Carmine?
Communism is the solution. Power to the people.
Oh.
That's not what I was expecting.
That's crazy.
This little bourgeois will eat their bones and the royalty, the blue.
Oh my.
Hey, but, hey, that's, that's my personal opinions, I have a professional station, I'm the Baron.
I was gonna say, did you just call for death of everyone in this room?
No, I mean, I'm in this room, so.
That's a good point, there you go.
Uh, next, Justin DiMarco, no felonies, regular guy, good guy, J money. Owns a couple properties and I need someone to help me wrackle the bunch.
Are you kinda going in order of the people you want here, just to make sure you don't like go over the limits Crane said there? Like, uh, you know, top priority first, a low priority?
I, uh.
We're gonna write this list and then you're gonna, you know, pick six of them from your academy or whatever.
Okay, we'll move on, we'll move on, we'll move on, we'll move on.
Thank you, thank you.
Gregory Johnson, former cop, who did the right thing. And got pushed aside and guess what? Dogtown takes care of good LEOs.
Uh, I think he hated cops.
Yeah.
Me? No, I don't hate cops, I.
Bobby definitely does.
Oh yeah, Bobby, I don't, I used to be a cop. I used to be the commander of the unified police force.
Me, I'm aware.
Yeah, some people forget.
I, I remember too, you used to lie to me in court all the time.
Oh my god.
He actually did a really good job, I'm gonna be honest, so.
He did not do a good job online, just so we're clear.
I agree, Alan.
Well, FTO-ing me specifically.
Oh.
There you go.
Uh, I'm for hiring him, he doesn't have any violent felonies, if, if that's someone you work with?
Yeah, I mean, if he, if, if he wants it, yeah.
Okay, um, Richard Wyotik, three-two-three-five state ID. Camera man, creepy, you probably don't want him on the streets.
Oh, this guy.
Oh yeah, this guy is creepy.
Yeah, let me, let me take him, let me take him, good, all right, uh.
Please, yes.
Take him, please.
I'm gonna say these, uh, they fall, they fall under the Timo bracket as well, but I'm gonna say the names regardless. Vivek Ramaswamy, the mayor we never had, and Lila Foker, his right-hand supporter.
Uh, no.
You know what you could do, you could trick them into agreeing to sing longer.
Yeah, fuck it.
Last time that happened, I had the fucking, last time that happened, the cops were at my door ready to fucking breach my walls, thanks to Conan Clarkson.
Oh.
I would have killed every last one of you for the sanctity of Dogtown, I'd have you know, we were prepared. Bush Wookiees is a lot, yes, you were, you were lucky Crane pulled you off, you were so lucky.
No.
All right, uh, and I only had six bullets in my gun, but I had a warrior's spirit. Uh, next thing, recently, me and Bobby realized that our pay got ducked a lot.
Yeah, yeah, a little bit.
What's up with that?
Uh, I don't know, just waiting to see what you guys make and if it's something great, then I'm gonna raise it back up.
Don't you think the product we've prepared, provided for you right now, what, you know, Dakota, what do prison, what do, uh, criminals say when you send them up to Dogtown, don't they, do they scream and piss their pants and say, no, please, don't send me, God, no, I'm, I'll, I'll stop, do. Have I not helped in your equation?
I will say, I have had people say, oh, fuck shit, I have to go back up there with Bobby and Carmine now, don't I?
I believe that, that has earned me a pay bump, I'm fixing the system.
All right, all right, I'll bump it back up.
Eh, I would like the motion for equal pay to the officers, cause we do just the same, if not more work than they do.
I don't know about that.
Cool, that went well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is, is High Command here for a reason? Do you guys have something you wanna talk about? Or you're just kind of observing?
The pay situation, ultimately.
Oh, oh.
Uh, what pay situation?
Oh, I, I lowered their pay by ten percent.
Okay, but you raised the fines by like five percent on lower income tax, right?
Yeah, I lowered, uh, the fines back down to default.
Okay.
That's why they all have weird numbers.
Well, they don't have it anymore, cause I, I lowered it, like literally when we took a little break.
Yeah, 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 so the, the fines, like, uh, last night, failure to signal was sixty-three dollars, now it's back to sixty, so it had a five percent difference.
So.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor.
Allow me to elaborate, I don't think you guys are doing a very good job at, uh, actually catching and processing criminals. I think that there is rampant crime in certain aspects and parts of the island. And in order to kind of crack down on that, we are going to operate on a quota system. Now, you might be familiar with how, uh, certain police departments and jurisdictions, uh, typically are met with a quota in order to receive funding, blah, blah, blah. This quota system is simple and I'm going to forward it to Barrick and Ruby here, so that they can, uh, make a little announcement. Uh, I did speak with Barrick about this briefly last night, and certain crimes that I believe in, from what I have heard from other people that are currently kind of running wild are being targeted by this quota system. Uh, and I will just read off some examples, okay? Uh, traffic citations, obviously, we don't need people speeding through the city and stuff, I know that's kind of like the LSPD's forte currently. Is going to be worth zero point one quota points. Um, joyriding, a big stolen car problem, uh, it's gonna be zero point five quota points. Bootlegging, one quota point, money laundering, three point zero quota points. Uh, criminal possession of a firearm, four point zero quota points. Sanitation robbery, huge fucking problem right now, uh, five quota points. Adoption fraud, ten quota points, um, I don't really expect you guys to get that one. And I set a little goal for this week, starting today, of fifty quota points. If you're able to rack up that many points, you guys get a pay raise. And now you might be thinking, Mayor, what if we catch someone doing adoption fraud while robbing sanitation and they had a firearm that they weren't supposed to have? But also they were money laundering, blah, blah, blah. Basically, the highest point worth charge is what takes precedent, you can only get credit for one of these on an incident. If a sanitation robbery is happening and the guy had a, a gun that he wasn't supposed to have, obviously, he would technically qualify for nine quota points, but wait, you only get credit for one. Uh, the, the root issue, which is the sanitation robbery, so it would be the highest one, five quota points, simple. This is to dissentivize charge stacking or people trying to, to fish for, you know, trying to reach the quota point ASAP, uh, you know, instead of, the, the purpose of this system is to spread out and to target certain crimes that I have observed to be a huge problem. Uh, instead of just kind of sitting in the city and issuing speeding tickets. Uh, hopefully, that allows some insight in, this counts for all shifts, I think fifty points with this current system is more than achievable.
What's the time period?
In a week, one week.
So at the end of the week, you're gonna go through every single report and add this all up yourself?
Yeah.
So will we be putting a halt to, uh, recruitment?
No.
Well, it's just, I, I, I don't, uh, are there quota points for onboarding and for training and for academy, are there any points for that?
No.
Will you be adding points for police work other than, uh, citations and tickets and arrests?
Uh, the, the issue with awarding points for that is retention, right? Not, uh, it, it's hard to say, you know, sure, you, you hire someone, you send them through academy and stuff, uh, but you know, how can I be sure that that person's gonna be, uh, actively and diligently working a month from now? The, the purpose of this quota system is to target specific crimes. I, I will say, I, I'm very appreciative and I think it's an extremely valuable job to actually take hours out of your day to run those academies and to, and to teach new cops how to be cops. Uh, and I would be interested in, in discussing some form of, uh, bonus for people who do that, monetary bonus, but there are a lot of cops. For example, I think Shift Two could probably take care of this quota by themselves, but yeah.
So what is the monetary gain, should we hit this?
Uh, I'll raise it by five percent.
Was it lowered by?
Ten percent. Uh, but, uh, conversely, if you guys are unable to meet this very, I think it's a very reasonable quota, I will unfortunately probably have to lower your pay.
Well, we already have people that are not willing to come on duty, so it'll just continue.
You've already made things worse, if I'm being entirely honest, so.
What?
Hey, in terms of just unit numbers on duty, since you made the change to the pay, things are already worse.
The, the difference is a, a matter of, I don't know, six hundred, seven hundred dollars a day?
Well, yeah, because people would rather work other jobs in the city where they can actually make money instead of the job that we selected them and hired them to do, which everybody else is gonna make more money than them and they have to do twice, three times, ten times the work, and, and it's just, I, I don't know.
If the incentive or calculus for being a police officer is, uh, income, then we have all failed.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I, look, and I know.
I don't think you're listening to us.
I am, he just, he just got done saying that lowering pay caused people to go off duty because they'd rather go make more money elsewhere. And my contention is, my contention is that if that's the case, I don't think a ten percent amount changes that factor. That equation is not superseded by ten percent, is it? You're telling me that ten percent is the difference between staying a cop and going and working another job? I feel like it's the opposite, I feel like cops already make less than working other jobs. So the ten percent is just a, a, a symbolic emotional response to something and is not rooted in math. It's, it's not, it's not a logical choice where they're actually sitting down and budgeting out their income, it's a, it's an emotional one. Unless my math is off, but I'd be happy to hear how.
Uh, who are the, who are the cops that are not coming on duty because of this, out of curiosity?
So it's not a, a matter that they're not coming on duty, it's just they are giving us less hours. So they're still cops, they're still doing, you know, when they do come on duty, they're doing their work. However, due to, uh, whether it be, uh, you know, several officers, you know, in a house, trying to get a house together or, or they already have, you know, it's just basic cost of living. A lot of officers are doing extra jobs because they wanna purchase their OD vehicle, you know, so they've got goals. It's not that they are not coming on duty a hundred percent, it's just that we have noticed that they're clocking off duty earlier or they're coming on duty later because they're doing other jobs so that they can pay towards what they, you know, need to do. A lot of us, I gotta tell you, the repairs unfortunately went up this week, so, you know, almost all my paycheck goes towards a repair.
How much, how much does that one across right now?
Uh, the highest at the moment that I've paid is about eighteen hundred, I think I paid the other night.
Yeah, somewhere in between that.
I, I paid fifteen hundred the other day, so it must have gone up recently.
It, it fluctuates depending on parts and availability.
And certain mechanics can offer that lower price point, but not all of them can.
Right, yeah.
And depends if they're on duty and all that good stuff, you know?
If they have parts, yeah.
So here's what we'll do, okay? Um, I want you to forward me the names of these people who are kind of, uh, hung up on all this stuff and if, I, I will speak to them personally, if it seems like they're not a good fit for the, uh, LSPD because they're more focused on, uh, you know, a seventy dollar, what was it, it was like forty-three dollars an hour difference, I think? Uh.
I, I don't thi, I don't think you're quite fully understanding what I'm saying, and they can make, uh, what I would make in four hours in a, you know, in, in an hour, hour and a half shift doing towing.
Yeah.
That's the difference.
But we're, but we're, but hold on, we're literally right back to what I just said, you're, you're just, I'm still stuck on this. If, if the ten percent.
Passion for the LSPD, they're still coming on duty, they're just not giving us as many hours.
So, and, and but, so you're trying to explain why they're not giving as many hours because it's more enticing to make, you know, four times as you just said, right? But the ten percent change that he made doesn't change that calculus, it remained before the ten percent change. So again, this is just an emotional response. It's not a logical one, I, I have yet to see any evidence that this is a logical measure of response about budget and finance. It sounds like their pay got docked a little bit and they took it as like a symbolic thing, well, well, that's the last straw, I'm just gonna go tow. I mean, they could have done that beforehand.
Ten percent is a lot, sir.
Is, is it enough to change the calculus or no?
I mean, the fact that none of us were told it was gonna happen, it was just a surprise.
That's, that's not an answer to what I asked.
Say your question again?
I've asked it three times, have you not been listening to anything I said?
Uh, I have been.
Okay, my question is as follows. You said that someone can go make four times as much doing tow as being a police officer. Your complaint is that this is an example, this precipitous transition towards them doing that is because of this pay cut. And you're talking about numbers, but what I'm arguing is, is that they would have done that beforehand, the pay cut, and it would have been worth just as much more. Ten percent does not make it suddenly four times stronger. So if it's been the same before or after the pay cut in terms of that calculus, then what we're saying is these people took the stimulus of the pay dock and it became an emotional response. I have yet to hear any evidence or argument that makes sense that this is an actual financial issue. It sounds like it's just an excuse to flip over the game board and walk outside and take your toys and go home.
Interjection, also, uh, I lowered income tax from ten percent to five percent, so the difference here is actually realistically more about five percent.
Hmm, so can, can I, can I answer?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sorry, I just, I wasn't sure if I was allowed to answer. I, I don't believe it's an emotional response. Uh, I believe it is the fact that we are seen as officers of the law, working for the city and that a lot of people feel that, uh, due to the high tax rate before and now the lowered tax rate, which we are all appreciative of. The fact is, our pay has fluctuated and with the amount of cost that we have to pour into the vehicles and a lot of us are trying to save so we can purchase our own vehicles and become responsible for our own PD vehicles. I don't believe it's an emotional response, I think it is a need and some people are seeing it as a need.
I mean, it was a need before and they just feel even more slighted by this.
Oh, well, I, I, it wasn't my intention to slight you guys, it was just kind of, uh, you know, uh, if you guys work, if, if you work hard enough that ninety percent could go up to one hundred and twenty-five percent. Can you imagine that? That would be great. All you gotta do is meet the quota.
I'm gonna see the math, by the way, it is five hundred dollars left for an eight-hour shift, that's what the math equates to, that's it.
Okay.
No, it's not like it's a giant chunk of money.
To be fair, for some people, that's enough to afford their repair.
Repeat that, sorry.
Repeat that, yeah, sorry.
To be fair to some people, that is the money they need to afford their repair on the vehicle for the shift they just worked.
Uh, fuck, man, get out there on a bike then, I guess, if you can't afford it.
People are doing that.
Yeah, I know, and it pisses me off.
So you just said people get out on a bike and that annoys you though, right?
Well, yeah, but I, you know.
Dichotomy between those two things?
Of course, I, I, look, of course I see the dichotomy, okay? Uh, that said, I have no good reason to dismantle your bike unit, so go ride a bike if you can't afford five hundred bucks.
I suppose I just see an imbalance between wanting us to work harder and will prove ourselves, which I believe that we already have. At the same time as building the LSPD, we're not gonna be giving any kind of quota to anybody that is pouring their time into raising art. At the same time as building the LSPD, we're not gonna be giving any kind of quota to anybody that is pouring their time into raising up the cadets that we currently have or the academy that we are trying to schedule right now. So all of our time to get to your quota is going to be spent doing other things at the moment.
Hmm, that's interesting.
I'm just saying we've got a balancing game here and, and you're either gonna help us balance or, or there's not gonna be a balance.
So you don't, you don't think the, uh, the active patrol contingent are capable of hitting the quota without the administrative side also participating?
Uh, I think that it would be fair to say that the quota should span over all duties of officers. I mean, you could take into account FTO hours, there's multiple things you could take into account. If you're basing it just on arrests, I personally would have to talk to Beric and, and others in leadership about maybe putting a halt right now so that we can test how many quota points a week we get.
I don't understand.
Uh, yeah, you guys aren't gonna freeze hiring. That's not happening.
And will you be expanding the quota points to other duties of an officer?
Look, I'm gonna be honest, fifty, fifty of these points in a week could be achieved by five cops straight up. They got a whole week, eight, eight, assuming that they work eight hours a day for seven days. There, you would have to be extremely, extremely bad at your job to not be able to do that. And I know that you guys have at least five cops who are able to do this job, who are not operating on the administrative side. And I set it low because this is kinda like the intro, right?
I mean, realistically, it's not bad. It's very manageable.
Okay, but you just said you want officers to work eight hours a day for seven days?
Yeah, like a job.
So eight hours a day for seven days, like a job?
Okay, well, uh, well, yeah, they could take one day off, maybe have one of the other cops fill in for them, like a schedule.
Very generous, Mayor.
Is every single one of the charges attached to one of these points?
Like every charge? No, the, the purpose of this is to target certain crimes.
Right, so the, so what I would say is then that is going to lead to people only targeting those crimes and letting other ones go by the wayside, thus negatively affecting the public and the civilians.
Um, good. I'm not, not the negatively affecting the civilians part. Uh, I want them to focus on these crimes, that's why I came up with this.
I'm just gonna say sanitation robberies have been brought up to me, uh, by countless citizens throughout the last week as being like a real issue. And you know, when it comes to your repair costs, right? Those workers getting robbed has downstream effects on the supply chain that are extremely negative for officers. So I think focusing something like sanitation robberies is actually gonna help you, like the mayor is trying to help.
Wait, is sanitation robbery a charge?
Uh, no, but if you catch someone robbing a sanitation worker, plus five quota points.
Okay, but, um, how many, I, I mean, for the last week, as you can see, we have dismantled, I would say in excess of about twenty-five, maybe even more, moonshine distilleries. So as we're curbing one crime, you guys are holding up a placard saying, oh no, don't worry about the moonshine distilleries that you guys just got rid of.
Solve all crime now.
I, I don't think you.
Should we get a point per stillie time?
Hold on, hold on.
What I'm trying to say is that in my experience, crime rolls, there are highs and lows in every crime. When I was first hired, oh my goodness, marijuana everywhere. And so what did we do? We hunted out all the marijuana and then things changed. It went on to group six being robbed, then it went on to sanitation being robbed. And we moved as a PD to every single one of them. So I think it's extremely unfair to say, well, last week sanitation were robbed. Well, yeah, they probably were, but we've just got rid of all of these moonshine distilleries. We, you know, we're, we're rolling as hard as we can when the crime comes up.
Oh, I, I would have added, uh, still destruction into the, uh, the quota system or whatever.
Oh, hell yeah, okay.
The two-point-five quota points.
Nice, you guys could make up like half it right there.
I mean, retroactively initiate this, about like three days ago, it's like we'll hit it right now.
Okay, so this will be for one incident, so if you find a bunch of stills together, uh, you know, that's only two-point-five points.
My fucking socks.
Sounds like we're gonna be lighting a lot, a lot of individual reports.
Twenty points two days ago.
Well, I can't wait to review those individual reports and then find out you guys are trying to game my system and dock your pay again.
Well, how many, how many points we need a, a week or a day?
Fifty?
Fifty for a week.
Between the entire PD, not individually.
I mean, let's be honest, seven times seven is forty-nine. If you need fifty in a week, that means you only have to get seven points a day. Some of those things are worth four points, which should only mean you would need like one or two other things. This is easy as fuck.
Should we get like a big clock that we can put over the PD, like Hunger Games? That way we'll know when the timer starts and when it ends?
Oh my god, it starts as soon as this, uh, this meeting ends, whatever that time is. Boom. Uh, any other questions? Uh, like, Ruby, I understand the, the administrative concerns. I took that into account when I set the, uh, the, the bar for the thingy. You guys should be able to continue to administrative self and have the cops that are on patrol right now achieve this goal, uh, 100%.
Okay, but I don't see training a cadet as administrative. I don't see running a, uh, academy, which we need to do either next weekend or the weekend after, as administrative. It's gonna take a bunch of people off duty to train cadets. Uh, we have to grow the PD, there's, there's no other way to curb crime in our city unless we grow the PD and we train people.
I would really like to give like bonuses to people who do that shit. I know that I've heard, I've heard from, because my wife and I interviewed a bunch of cops, you know, as part of like the audit and stuff and.
One, two, three, four.
Routinely, I suggested that like FTOs get like a bonus, as incentive for, you know, training, blah, blah, blah.
I put forward a request for FTO bonuses ten months ago.
Eleven?
Yeah, I, I feel like we're all on the same page, but I, I, I heard, I, I heard from several cops, they're like, you know, that it doesn't really, doesn't really change anything for them.
Well, if they're, if they knew their pay was getting docked, I guarantee you they would say that differently now.
Okay, uh, yeah, I mean, I'm for handing out bonuses, uh, so long as the time is logged and everything is above board and we can prove that they were, you know, FTO-ing or running academy for a certain amount of time, then I would 100% be behind.
Only three people.
Financial payment for them.
Okay, can I just say one more thing about the, uh, the quota point system?
Yeah.
So you can do whatever you want, but we have calls in which there are hostages, those will always be a priority for the PD. That's just the way our SOPs go. If there's a hostage involved, we're going to that call, probably a lot of units, so. I don't know if that's set up as is, but that would be a good, uh, middle ground for the PD to have those be on your quota system, uh, robbery also.
Well, eh, look, we're not talking about every crime right now, these, these are the things I'm personally interested in seeing you guys solve. Or try to solve.
Understood.
Yeah, I went ahead and added kidnapping, uh, for, for one quota point, okay?
So have you, have you seen, and do you have access currently to our, uh, sit, you know, our incidents and reports?
Not yet, I, uh, we need to get that set up.
So the quota point is coming from, hmm, I suppose the easiest way you could say is blindness?
Uh, no, I mean, I talk to cops all the time. And I talked to, I talked to a lot of people on the street too, I'm the mayor.
Uh, we've been conducting, uh, midterm marital approval polls and getting people's feedback, like this entire, like last week. So this is all like relatively recent data.
Right, but you haven't had access to see how much work we currently do, correct?
Uh, nope.
They have the auto reports, right?
Uh, I don't think the audit focused on those.
So I, I have a question.
Yeah, what's up?
So how, how is a, uh, like how is a point determined, I might miss this coming in from seventy-eight goal. But how's a point determined and, and who is a point awarded to a person? Whoever, whoever starts the report.
To the, to the, to the LSPD.
Okay, okay, good.
Uh, and they're awarded by incident, so you know, if someone is doing a sanitation robbery and they have a, an illegal gun, uh, you would award the highest point for that incident, which would be sanitation robbery, which is five points.
Okay.
Simple.
And you only need fifty a week?
Uh, fifty-five, no, I added a couple of charges or whatever at your guys' request.
What, what is the base? You get, do you get one?
Each sort of thing I'm interested in seeing, uh, pursued right now by the LSPD is worth a different amount of points.
But does it, does the lowest that you can get is one?
Uh, the lowest you can get is zero-point-one for a traffic citation.
Oh, oh shit, okay.
Yeah, so, so this coming week, we won't be bothered with any kind of traffic, we'll just be going for the higher points.
Yes, 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 yes. Uh, any other questions on this?
Wait, so.
I, I just wanna clarify, is this to curb you yourself, Mayor, from getting traffic citations?
No.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Wait, can I just ask, you were given one earlier this week, right?
Yeah, it was, uh, negligent driving.
Did our pay get raised before or after Bones gave you that ticket?
Uh, your pay got lowered after I got that ticket.
Okay.
Why?
Just asking.
Are you just asking?
Just curious, I'm a curious guy, you know?
Well, it's, it's a very specific thing to be curious about.
How so?
Kind of a pointing question, isn't it?
It's like you're implying something about me.
What am I implying?
I don't know, that I might be corrupt?
Did I even hint at that?
Yeah.
Asking you a question is hinting at corruption?
Uh, asking me a question about retaliating against you guys for issuing me a traffic citation is hinting that I am corrupt, yes.
It's asking for, you know, facts in order when they occurred in time.
Oh, well, I mean, that's a very specific fact to be concerned about, that, that's all. I mean, there's a lot of other facts concerning the amount of power, I didn't ask about those.
I could have found a pain point, that he is blatantly corrupt and is obvious.
PD, which we've been going pretty in detail today, I would say.
Okay, well, I mean, file that away in your, your dossier about impeaching Max the Mayor and wipe your ass with it, because I haven't seen shit yet from you guys.
Okay, well, we don't need to go get ugly.
It's crazy, you seem to have an issue with the fact we're trying to work with you, despite the fact we disagree with you sometimes.
Yeah, that's fair, uh, and, and let's be entirely clear, the only people I need to work with in this room on this stuff is Ruby and Beric. Uh, you guys are hearing this as a courtesy, this power is the mayor's and it will remain the mayor's. And nothing you guys say to me will ever make me want to change my mind unless I am genuinely interested in hearing your input. This is to the council, um, but yeah. Ooh, I, I, I'm gonna write up a, a full dossier on the, uh, the quota system, should be easy to achieve. Uh, we can talk more about, uh, bonuses for training, having to teach someone from the bottom up again and again and again, saying the same things over and over and over to different people. Oh, God, would love to see a, a bounty for that that you guys can collect on.
For FTO sessions?
Just training in general, like academies, FTOs, all, all that shit. I, I will send it to, uh, Ruby and Beric, the, uh, the full breakdown, the quota system. And, uh, you know, if, if you guys have any good questions or concerns moving forward, like this isn't something that has to be amended at council. So if, if you guys come to me with like a good point that you would like to see adjusted in a certain way, then I'm more than willing to talk about it.
Cost has gone down.
Okay.
So I gotta go check on that.
Well, it's, it's gonna figure, it goes down, because we typically wanna keep the fines larger than like a license cost or like, or, you know, just straight up buying it, right? To, to incentivize buying it as opposed to stealing it, right?
Right, an actual deterrent.
And I wrote very briefly here, because I, I, I was so tired that I, I couldn't aptly and legally write a good little penal code blurb about this. I said including turbos, transmissions and other assorted aftermarket parts, uh, you know, to cover it. Anyone who's worked on a car has seen that there's definitely, there are other ways to modify and improve cars that, uh, that Mosley's just hasn't stocked for yet. So this would kind of future-proof any other forms of larceny of an aftermarket vehicular part, boom.
Okay, I think we serialized weapons and I think that's probably the only thing we need to serialize, unless something that comes up that.
I mean, right now, there's, there's no way.
I think we just leave it at that.
Right now, there's nowhere to track them.
What's up, coin?
Uh, I mean, I was just gonna say, eh, eh, when it comes to investigating this shit, not having those serialized makes it damn near impossible.
Yeah, how do you prove that they were stolen?
Stolen if it's not, if it's not identifiable?
But I do, I do think Judge Crane is, is, you know, he's a hundred percent right about when, when do you stop? But at the same time, for this particular case, we've had so many civilians having this shit happen to them and it just feels bad.
You gotta, you gotta, gotta catch them in the act, do some proactive.
This is not, it's not really something we can handle either way, we don't manufacture the parts, so.
Okay.
Malton's not here, Cantor, you have anything you wanna present?
Uh, I wasn't able to work on my presentation because I just haven't been around much, but I did have something, an idea for a charge, uh, that I haven't really plotted out time far, and I'll be honest, I'm just not the professional on that, so I'll defer to y'all. This was a suggestion from one of my doctors, um, committing violent acts on government property. So it wouldn't supersede the violent acts, it would just be an extra charge for having done it on government property. So we're running into an issue where the clowns especially are just going around fucking beating each other up and stabbing people in the hospital and other people are getting, uh, hurt for it and it's causing significant issues. So that, that's the pitch essentially, kinda like a, an extra charge for having it be there. Not too big of a thing, it's not like medical terrorism, it's not like medical discontinuity or something, just, uh, you know, uh, don't fuck around here or you'll get punished a bit more.
Something to get them to stop, yeah.
Yes.
It is true, because like.
PD grounds and stuff like.
They were running through the emergency room and in the halls with wrenches out, attacking cops, trying to break out another one of the clowns that was in custody the other night.
Mm-hmm.
And it's been happening quite often.
Yeah, doesn't need to be some giant thing, um, where it's like, you know, days and days in prison, just, uh, you know, like, uh, the, the pitch was essentially just discourage it as kinda like a middle ground there. Mm-hmm, I could go either way on it, but I figured I'd pitch it to see how y'all feel about it. I think it's, it's better than going as hard as some of the charges we've had in the past for committing violent acts, uh, in the hospital. Lotter thing that I think people could actually push if we just did something like this, uh, is, is my thoughts on it.
So patients are actually being injured while the clowns are cloning around?
Uh, I don't think patients yet, um, doctors, yes, already, uh, that one obviously could apply to like, you know, uh, to other charges and things.
Ego act sort of cover that if they're injuring doctors?
If they're going after doctors, yes. The, the issue is, um, recently, uh, clowns have been choosing the hospital for everything. They are attacking each other in and outside of the hospital, uh, all the time and causing significant issues for, for just everyone.
Yeah, a lot of the people that are hurt, um, are kind of collateral damage, so I don't know if that could actually be pushed.
I know, it's, it's kinda like, they're not, no one's being targeted, um, other than more clowns, they're just bringing it all to the hospital and fucking with, uh, everyone else who's there.
Is this part of the clown games, just out of curiosity, do you know?
No, I don't believe so, I think it's just them being them.
Just being, them being them and choosing the hospital because, hey, if I get fucked up, I'm in the best place for it, things like that.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, uh, you know, if, like I said, uh, this was not my additional idea, if y'all, uh, aren't a fan of it, that's okay. But, uh, I do think it's a better middle ground. Uh, it's a dissuasion from people fucking around at the hospital without fucking their lives over completely if they.
Other people, voice your thoughts. Sorry, so I wanna double check, you, you're suggesting like a charge, not like diet terrorism or whatever, or medical discontinuity, but something that just is like, if you're committing violence on hospital grounds repeatedly or?
The idea was government grounds, so, uh, any government property.
No, there's like felony trespassing, but there's not.
But they're not trespassing if they're like outside of MRPD or in the hospital, you know, unless they're trespassing.
But they're still on government property committing a violent act.
On government property, yeah.
Uh, I don't think that addressing everything with a, a law fixes it. I think there are.
Uh, I, for this particular crime, these things are so expensive and in demand that I think the co- the cost of operation for someone to have a gun and go to Mosley's and get away with this crime, or just a knife even, they don't even need a gun to make a mechanic try to pull this shit out. Yeah, I, I think you could charge them with, uh, what, like fucking aggravated robbery or some shit? What, what would, what would the most applicable charge be right now?
Are you still talking about the turbo?
Wait, are you still talking turbo?
We moved on to another topic, if you weren't, I don't know if you could hear us either, probably.
So, no, 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 I was, I was writing, sorry, guys.
No, no, no.
You're, you're okay, yeah.
Cantor was talking, Cantor was talking about like aggravated violence on government property.
Yeah, essentially another charge for if they can.
Just ego act them, right?
Also, I was saying, but.
That was the issue, is that they're not targeting anyone, um, they just are fucking around too much type thing. It's not really the ego act.
They're choosing to take their little clown fuck-around games at the hospital.
Part of the city hall if they do fuck shit here or trying to like, uh, tag you here, another modifier.
In the past, when we had people fuck around too much, uh, but we don't wanna ban people who need access to the hospital from getting it, right? We had forced somebody.
We want trespassing to be very, uh, less.
Yeah, we had forced, uh, people to, um, essentially not be at the hospital unless they had a real medical need to be there and to not interact with doctors by otherwise.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we do that, I just don't want to make it the business of unnecessarily trespassing people who aren't causing issues for us, right? Like, um, like as, as doctors directly, when they're more causing issues to the general public who are trying to come get help. Like, you know, we, we'd end up having a giant fucking trespass list that can never really be enforced, because we can't do anything about it, we have to wait for the cops to come. And oftentimes the cops don't come, and even if they, you know, do, by that time they would have already left, like it doesn't. Uh, the issue isn't that we don't want them there, we just don't want them attacking people, which is why the charge.
Think about, I only have to amend T Act, you guys went over everything last time, correct?
We, we tabled a couple of things, I think, right?
We actually tabled stuff, yeah.
They're all not approved and not removed, so I'm assuming you guys wonder where.
Uh, the DNA on file, we ended up amending the constitution, uh, but not upon ending of employment with the PD as long as you're like in good standing when you leave, but we did not add any additional government employees.
No, that's fine, that was like.
That was the main thing for that, exactly.
Yep.
Murphy's Law, yeah. And then the death penalty one, still tabled because Cantor and I didn't have a chance to work out like doctor specifics and trying to just.
I'll be around a lot more, so we'll get that done.
Sounds good.
All right. Everything was talked about then. I guess the TMNT Act is basically to prevent people from going to the sewers because they are causing damages to utility, basically.
Is this stemming from that town hall?
Oh, that one? Yeah.
Which one?
Remember when the explosions, the one that you, me and Shafan?
Oh, yeah, well, yes, it's one of them.
Yeah, I don't really.
The amount of people putting stills down there, they can't seem to figure out how to do their own fucking job.
Yeah, he wants to prevent people from going into the.
Cause damages. So, and they shouldn't be in the sewers in the first place unless they have a valid reason.
Yeah, what would constitute a valid reason to be down there?
Utility workers?
Yeah, utility, job, work related.
Okay.
People can roleplay. I like that.
Are the, how much is a fine for this?
Well, so the thing is, we don't have a specific, so we, Siwan and I have talked about adding.
It does sign here, the penalties for.
Would you be able to do that though?
I mean, who owns the sewer infrastructure? It's the government, right?
Government, yeah.
So it's felony trespassing.
Are you guys gonna put together an elite sewer unit?
I've been down there, it's rough.
Oh, no, not in.
I've been trying to do that for weeks.
Fucking rough down there.
Yeah, I don't know if we want PD or anyone to like go specific in the sewers, but just having a reason like, yes, catching, catching them going in and out.
Ooh, yeah, you just sit above a manhole, man. There's one, I saw, I saw a bunch of these motherfuckers crawl out of the across from Roy Lowenstein like cockroaches.
The one right at the way.
Yeah, right across.
You do like you do in your backyard with gophers, you sit above the hole and you smoke them out and chop their heads off with a shovel.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, it'd be great. Except you probably legally should not chop their heads off with a shovel. That's probably not good.
I think that at first people were scared that this wasn't legal in the first place. When they realized that that wasn't the case, they become very lazy. They just leave. They opened the fucking potholes, people could fall down, all types of shit. They shouldn't be going down there in the first place.
They don't even try to hide the shit.
It's on hygienic, too.
I'll let you out there.
It's also horrifically unsafe down there. I did some testing on things early on and it's radioactive down there and could cause extreme significant health issues if they're not wearing appropriate clothing, which I fucking doubt most civilians are.
Yeah, we actually will not let any PD person down there without full coverage.
Yep.
Yeah, I've seen people come out of the stores with some wild shit on that's unsafe to be wearing.
You get the flesh eating bacteria.
Slowly kill them, even if they feel fine at first. Hey, they might even start to feel a bit better, but it will slowly wear away at their insides and cause one of the worst imaginable, so.
I think a brain eating amoeba.
Making it illegal is a good idea.
Well, I guess we don't really have to do much. If they can just be charged with felony trespassing, I guess that's.
Yes, honestly, that's perfect. Fuck it, yeah.
I feel like the enforcement mechanism.
I don't know, Crane, could you add, so right now it says includes power plants? Is that still the case? Like, are people not allowed near the power plants?
I guess it's still government land, isn't it? So maybe.
I do not think that you should be running around, you know, public utilities and shit, right?
Yeah.
Agreed.
Could you add the sewer system to it? Just like as a node or do?
So people can't spot the cops on it.
Ah, nah, let them sue for it.
Alright.
Okay, fuck it.
And then some other judge can figure it out.
Sounds good.
That's delegation, baby.
And also allows for things to come to me naturally instead of me just waving the wand.
I think that's the only thing I have.
Uh, let's see here. Uh, did Alan say if he had anything?
I got two things. First, I am concerned about some things I've been seeing related to, well, what I have affectionately coined as a debt reservoir. There are certain criminal elements and/or independent operators who seek to sort of live outside of society's constraints and I've noticed that that behavior is cropping up again. So people are going to flaunt the government by being in debt permanently and never caring about getting out of debt. Well, then maybe we'll figure out a way for them to get out of debt.
I was actually.
So I'm going to, I'm gonna look into that. We're gonna see about maybe making some changes to how that all works.
Yeah, when we were just talking about the clowns, actively going into monumental debt should have repercussions.
Absolutely, it should.
Well, the government will be fetching their fare coins, so we'll see how that goes. Yeah, Cletus.
How do you want us to approach that situation as a PD? Because.
It's not at that level yet. We're, I'm just, I'm giving the council fair notice that I recognize there's an issue there and the DOJ is looking into solutions with the government.
Okay.
Uh, in terms of, you know, the future, that takes time.
You guys won't, you guys won't have to change how you operate all, Cletus. You're just gonna send them to prison and then they're, you know, if they're in debt.
We will see about that. Yeah, we will see how it's gonna, how it's gonna work out. But it is something that we recognize is an issue and it is being looked at.
Alright.
Uh, my second one, which I think most people have already discussed with me somewhat, is the expungement amendment. I recognize that initially our scheme was to proffer the expungement arrangement, but it was contingent upon a high monetary sacrifice because there was no, you know, there was no time limit. You could just, you could just come in, murdered eight cops the day before, slab down a huge amount of money and you're, you know, you're clean. And I recognize who that targets, but I think that we should probably also target the other side of the equation, the other outliers, right? For people who truly did mess up and are looking for a second chance and not only are looking for a second chance, but have demonstrated for a long period of time that they are living that second chance, whether or not we offer them the deal or not. And that, you know, point to me is somewhere around thirty days. So if someone were to be crime free, then I could very much understand that, you know, this is that person who truly tried to turn their life around. They're not just gonna, you know, well, gosh, what, what random scenario could that come up? But they're just not gonna pay five hundred thousand dollars to run for mayor, you know? These are people that truly, you know, made a change. Greg idiot, whatever, fucking Greg, yeah. So either way, basically the parameters I came up with are pretty simple. I put them in there. If you guys have ideas on tweaking anything, I just threw this together in like two minutes talking to Shavon the other day. So the idea was, if you've been clean greater than thirty days, the lower rate on your first time is fifty instead of five hundred, hundred, and you know, hundred and fifty third time. And this lower rate can only be used every thirty days. So if you get an expungement and you fuck it up and you want to just like get clean again, it's not the thirty days again, it's a longer time period.
Uh, okay, yeah, I have no objections to the what you have written. In fact, I think it's really great. Etta, do you have anything?
Actually, I do have. I did have another thing that is still work in progress, so don't mind it. It is the turf act. If you guys have any ideas or anything for it, feel free to add, talk, voice your opinion. Right now it's rough, so don't even. Basically, it is to prevent people from bunkering down wherever the fuck they want and then telling people to fuck off and saying like, if you go on my turf, I will kill you.
Oh, that's, or like when I got robbed, just walking to the clothing store.
Yeah, I think it was initially started when Shavon was doing this scavenger hunt.
Oh, yeah.
People were being threatened that they would be murdered if they went on a Chumash Pier.
That's.
Well, we know, we know it's called a murder pier, but it's still kind of, you know.
Yeah, but by a gang that said this is our territory and you can't go on there or we will kill you.
Usually they wait till you get on the pier, then they murder you.
Okay, when I put the signs up, by the way, alright, they weren't there, so I didn't realize that that was gonna be a problem. I wasn't trying to, yeah.
But they shouldn't be doing it either way, so that's not on you to.
Anything else, Chief of Staff?
Uh, are we gonna do the, shall I wait on the incessant one or no?
Yeah, that one's tabled for now.
Okay, tabled for now. Um, no, unless you want to present the unauthorized business infractions.
Yep, that's the last thing that I would like to present. In preparation for eventually having the federal government say, hey, all of those businesses you've approved are approved and they can start operating. In preparation for that, we are going to have a charge for operating an unlicensed business. Um, and it is very expensive because the business license is fifty thousand. I settled on seventy-five thousand as a fine for doing it to incentivize people actually seeking out and operating legally within Los Santos for the purpose of allowing the state to retrieve its sales tax. Um, it's in there under operating an unlicensed business. Any opposers? Question mark?
I have questions, but I am initially not opposed.
Questions?
Does social media postings, i.e. the Yellow Pages, count? If someone puts up, hey, come to, you know, whatever their business name is, is for this amenity, repair, food, whatever. And it's not a licensed business, sorry.
Here's what I wrote for the penal blurb. I wrote, henceforth is now illegal to claim to own or operate a business within Los Santos without an officially administered business license. This does not include the food stalls present in the senior buns mall. The appropriate permit for such will suffice. So, yeah, it would be illegal for people to say on Twitter that they own a business.
Okay.
Uh, Ruby?
Uh, is it any chance we could also include charities?
Like an unlicensed charity?
I'll explain. We, we come across a lot of people that are doing charity work.
Yeah, no nonprofits.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, that's a hard no for me. No nonprofits ever.
How about unlicensed lotteries?
Uh.
I like, I like. If people are dumb enough, if people are dumb enough to buy into it, then fuck it, hey. There's no contract, there's no nothing, you're just buying a ticket. If you, hey, I'm, I wait for the day when somebody runs with all the money because there's nothing protecting these people.
Understood.
Right now we'll focus on businesses.
Got it.
Um, yeah.
Oh, I forgot, I actually had something else.
Uh, yeah, so, but first, do we have any names for this business, unlicensed business charge?
No, I think it's fair.
Uh, I marked it as a misdemeanor because I don't think this should.
Yeah. They may, they may want to make, yeah, their business legitimate.
Exactly.
How do we, uh, no, my hesitation is how do we ensure that uh, we don't run into like the lemonade stand problem?
What do you mean?
Meaning like, you know, when, typically when you write laws like these, right? And it's just anyone running a business without a license, that gives police grounds to, you know, bill someone running a lemonade stand seventy-five thousand dollars. So what I'm, what I'm getting at is, do we want to like, how do we not allow that to happen?
Uh, we can, we can, uh, we can have it in the SOPs that they're warned one time before that they're issued this license.
Hmm, okay.
That'd be good.
Yeah, and then you mark the warning down their profile or whatever. You get one mulligan.
The mechanics that kind of work, uh, uh, how do I even word it? Um, that, you know, I guess contractors, yeah, like, since they're still technically through Mosley's, but they're not advertising as their own entity, but they are conducting business not on Mosley's property, would that still count or?
Like Finley Milton on his like advertisements or whatever?
Oh, I know, there's tons of mechanics that just kind of go to different places.
Yeah, some are like outright businesses that are advertising and some of them are like, hey, if you need a repair, come to this place.
Offering handyman services is one thing, but, but it sounds like they should just get a business license if they're doing all that.
Yeah, ultimately it comes down to the LSPD's ability to articulate that someone is attempting to operate an unlicensed business.
Got it.
Cool. Uh, any opposers? Question mark?
The turbo law was everyone yay, me nay, right?
I, I believe so.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, no more.
I wrote up some penal language in the operating an unlicensed business one. You can modify that in a better way, Alan, if you think it needs to be modified. Uh, I'm pretty sure that's it, lads. Pretty sure that's it.
Adoption policy.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
How are we adjusting that again?
Not sure. I wanted to talk to everybody and brainstorm about it because there's currently a loophole in the adoption policy for like daisy chaining adoptions.
Oh, right, yeah.
What, what's the loophole? Yeah, what do you mean?
So, um, an example, right? I could adopt Michael, Michael can adopt Etta, Etta can adopt Crane, Crane can adopt Alex, Alex can adopt Cantor and so on and so forth. And now you've extended a weird, let's say they're all, however it's adopted, right? However it is. Now you have this like weird, especially if it was siblings, right? Now you have this like weird sort of like extended.
Yeah.
Yeah, let them be freaks, but they, how much would they would have paid by that point?
Okay, that's actually a really good point.
Don't we want that? We want that delusional shit.
Was the money generation, no?
We don't want that because the, part of the reason why I even conceived this to begin with is because uh, it encourages like a, another layer of hidden retaliation potentially between two parties that would otherwise be solved. Like, for example, police department arrests somebody like Billy Bob Joe, but he's got a secret fake relative that's gonna come and fucking slit that cop's throat. Shit like that. Uh, it convolutes and, uh, what, muddies conflicts like on the street too between people. So, no, we don't, we don't want the daisy chaining.
You're saying like mass relation.
Right, so it's deterred, but.
In the streets, got it.
Hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean.
So what is the proposed change?
I don't know.
Sure how to fix it.
I mean, also, wouldn't a judge just deny you, because to make the daisy chain work, you'd have to claim that you were like the great grandson of so-and-so? And that person is your same age or even younger than you potentially? Seems kind of dumb.
It does say, the system does not recognize grandchildren or other sort of familial relations.
Grandchildren, right? But those like external ones rather than say sibling one?
Yeah, chain wouldn't work then, right?
I feel like the chain would still work with siblings.
Yeah, but siblings aren't adoption.
Uh.
People do around here. So I was under the understanding that.
That's been approved?
I was under, I don't think they have under the new system, but in the past they sure as hell have. So I was under the understanding that the adoption policy applied to adopting any type of family member because people do that shit all the time. They adopt someone as their parent, they adopt someone as their uncle or whatever.
Can't, can't people just buy each other matching bracelets or something?
That's what I'm fucking saying, but no, people care about it for some reason. And I would charge them for caring about it.
Let's get a round of applause for the Chief of Staff.
That's really unnecessary, but thank you.
Woo!
Alright, um, let me just pull this up real fast. Okay, so TLDR, the mayor is dissatisfied with performance and is incentivizing PD performance with the quota system. There is a target of, looks like he adjusted this from fifty to fifty-five, fifty-five quota points in a week to earn a pay raise by five percent. There is a breakdown of quota points for different specific charges with adoption fraud being worth the most at ten quota points. Sanitation robbery, if you are able to get that charged, is five quota points. Criminal possession of a firearm is four. Money laundering is three, destruction of a still, two point five quota points. Kidnapping, one, boot lagging, one, joyriding, half a quota point, and traffic citation is point one quota points.
Point one for traffic stops?
So how much a week?
Fifty-five points.
And that's for the whole PD, right?
Correct. This is across the entire, across the entire police department. No, not per individual, no, no, no. We're trying to set you up for success.
Wait, so it's fifty-five points for how many levels in the battle pass?
One.
Not a battle pass.
Is that a five percent pay?
It sounds like a battle pass. Sounds like if I don't make quota, I lose my job.
Can I buy extra levels for the battle pass?
Fortnite.
Guys, don't worry. That's a great suggestion, Declan. I'm gonna go ahead and just, I'm gonna spitball that with the deputy mayor after this.
Can you buy a multiplier for your actions? So, you know, instead of point one for a traffic stop, it becomes point two now?
With what money?
No, 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 traffic citations will continue to be point one quota points.
Can it be double on the weekend?
You pay for.
Guys, don't worry about it. If you have chatterbox on your scene, just, just, just call me up and you'll probably admit to adoption fraud times ten again. Don't worry about it.
I have a, I have a question.
Okay.
Chief of Staff?
Sure, sensei hook.
Driven recently, have you?
No, no, I haven't.
Okay, follow-up question. These, these points, let's say I arrest someone for like what Bay said, ten, ten charges of adoption fraud. Does that mean that we meet quota instantly?
So something like the chatterbox scenario? No, you only get the maximum and it's just for one. So if you have one person with six counts, you're only gonna get the ten quota points for the one, like one adoption fraud. You're not gonna get it ten for each six.
So it's per suspect, not per incident?
Either both.
Okay.
So let me just say, let me just hold on, hold on, hold on, let me back up. So if you have somebody who is, let's say you stop somebody in a sanitation robbery who also has criminal possession of a firearm, right? That would seem like it's five quota points and four quota points for a total of nine. Uh, no, that is not how the quota points will work. It will be just whatever is the higher one, so it would just be the five quota points.
So major per incident, okay.
So each arrest can score up to five points?
Ten, technically because of the adoption fraud.
Wait, hold on. So what if you have like a incident with like eight suspects?
That's a good question.
There should be more points, right? Because it's harder to catch eight people than six.
It should be, it should be like per suspect, per incident, not per, per suspect.
When you say eight suspects, like eight suspects committed what crime though, based on what I've stated already? When you say eight suspects, like eight suspects committed what crime though, based on what I've stated already?
So like, say robbery.
Like sanitation robbery and there's like eight of them?
Sound, sounds like it was per incident.
I don't know, I mean, that really wouldn't make sense.
Lenny, I feel like you feel like you're reading between the lines.
Your intuition is so great.
We shouldn't make assumptions, Lenny, son. Our wisdom makes us prevail in these times.
That's just what she said, that it was per incident.
Don't speak Catalan.
You know, I'm not exactly sure on those details, but I'll be sure to get the right answer and get back to you, lads.
When, when is this being?
Implemented right at the end of the council meetings when the timer started for that, um.
So there's a timer and we've only just found out.
Incentivize better performance, um, and to assist in the incentivization, uh, pay was reduced by ten percent. And income tax was also reduced to two by two per, income tax was reduced by like two, uh, whatever, down to two percent, so it's really like a ninety-eight percent total of what she walked out.
Wait, so. Wait, hold on, wait.
Wait, hold on, this happened again?
Minus two, minus eight, ten minus two, minus eight, minus ninety?
Lenny, Lenny, Lenny.
Let him cook, let him cook.
I don't need a pay reduction to be incentivized with this program, and the program is designed to incentivize by default.
People go off duty to go make money because we don't make enough money on duty.
Oh, can you give me the names? Who are those people doing that?
No, babe.
Uh, who's, so who's doing that? Can I get their names?
Who is doing that? I'm curious.
Hey, just do that, hey, just do that shit while you're on duty.
Um, I, wait, hold on, hold on, what's her, uh, was it Graves? Officer Graves said that they're just finding out about this, about this now? Nakoda? Ruby? I'm Barak. We're all in the meeting, so I'm not sure why you're just finding out about it now. It feels like somebody should have communicated that information downstream. I apologize, I'm the first person who's come here to inform you all. Um, I would have done that sooner if I had realized that, uh, downstream communication would not have occurred.
Well, to, to be fair, Ms. Shavon, uh, this would be the, this would be the time and place to, to let people know.
I was under the impression that an announcement was going to be made, uh, in the MDT for you all, so again, I am, I'm really sorry. I, I, I thought that there was gonna be something done to inform you. I did not realize this was the first time you were hearing about this. Um, and just to go back on the pay, so you're at, let's say a hundred percent of pay, pay was reduced by ten percent. However, however, the income tax that was prior ten was reduced to two percent. So you only, uh, instead of that tax, so you're only, uh, having your total pay reduced by two percent. Right now, so ninety-eight percent.
Two percent?
No, no, it's being reduced by two percent, so you're at ninety-eight percent. Next, the pay was reduced, but you're also getting money back on the income tax being lowered.
Ninety-eight percent of what I was making before?
Yes, ninety-eight percent of what you were making before.
What am I gonna do with those extra thirty dollars gone? I got kids to feed, man!
Yeah, uh, I did, I did the math, uh, it's thirty-six dollars an hour.
Thirty-six, thirty-six dollars!
And that is one less hamburger.
That's less money for my daughter's tuition.
Are you telling me I need to manage my finances and proceed carefully so that I have everything planned out instead of just spending money whenever I want? Fuck that, no!
I mean, if you need help with financial literacy and budgeting, I have a lot of calculators and tools that I can offer you for free to help you budget.
No.
Shavon, can I ask you a question about the quota stuff?
Sure.
I did have a clarifying question, but I'll, 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 I'll see the list before I ask this.
All right. I don't know.
Wait, what is lame?
Uh, that is stealing turbos.
Wow. That should be five, I'm gonna be honest, that should be five. That is actually, I would, I would go as far as that should be like ten. Because that, that's borderline impossible to actually catch someone doing, and it, it is the highest impact crime in the city. By like per dollar. It's against other people. Like not against some damn bullshit corporation like a laundromat.
So lame is this larceny of aftermarket motor enhancements. It is a new felony that we have, that the council just passed today, that is, yeah, so turbo transmissions or whatever, et cetera. It is applicable for each aftermarket enhancement that was taken, so if a transmission on a turbo was taken, it's two felonies.
It's thirty-six dollars, honey.
So that's the full list, correct?
When is that gonna be in the?
Group six.
Well, hold on, hold on, I, I, I had to ask an initial question, so that, that's, that's the full list, correct?
Just double check and make sure that this matches everything that I was looking at. Yeah, that's the full list.
I'm working two cases right now, both involving trying to locate and find somebody who's suspected of attempted first degree murder. Say this case takes me three weeks to do, is there any recognition for the time and effort I put into that?
No, there's no murder.
According to the sheet, it looks like my, my work is null and void.
Uh, your work still matters, you're still doing your job as an officer, you know it?
Well, yeah, but according to the quota, I wouldn't be doing enough, so I, I feel, the, the issue I'm looking at right now, and, and this is my only point of contingency I have with this, is that this looks like it would more promote quantity, not quality.
How would it promote quantity when there's only a limited number of quota points that you even need to reach up to fifty-five? It is to incentivize crimes that are a problem, according to the mayor. Sanitation robberies are a huge problem. You wanna talk about PD repairs costing a lot? It's because of this, because fucking material prices are through the roof, so parts go up because nobody is stopping the sanitation robberies. We're trying to help you. Help us help you.
No, that, that's, that's, that's fair, but I'm gonna be moving on from adoption fraud for somebody who attempted to take someone's life, and I would say that that makes more recognition than ten quota points for adoption.
Well, hold on.
Do you think the quota points are gonna be hard to fill?
I don't think they're gonna be hard to fill, but I think if we're going based on the recognition, would you not agree that attempted first means a lot more? Yeah, okay. I think the, I, I've dealt with four cases in the last like two weeks.
Oh my God, they're telling me that the mayor's office might be wrong on what's rampant? I think they might have, not have the information or received.
Wait, I'm sorry, did you say this is an attempted first degree murder and you've been working on it for three weeks?
I'm working on one right now that just started about a week ago. Person's in the ICU, I'm not gonna go into too much detail. Uh, unfortunately, until I get a chance to speak with that person, there's no, there's not much to really proceed with that case. There's people I could talk to, there's things I can do, but I'm not gonna discuss.
And the doctors don't have any estimate on when this person might be able to be out of ICU to have a discussion? So you might have just, okay, all right, well, as I say, you're gonna hit the statute of limitations and with the thirty days, you're already at three weeks and I haven't woken up yet.
No, I have about three weeks left, but I, my, the, the, the point I'm making is, while I understand the, the purpose of, I think that for an officer like myself who is planning on spending many hours on multiple subpoenas, uh, and multiple interrogations, for me to personally find ways to make that quota right now, I'm not gonna be in a lot of situations for traffic citations, I'm gonna be in interrogation rooms. I think that time spent is more valuable than meeting a quota, but I, I understand the purpose of this, but you, do, do you at least see where I'm coming from?
It's, first of all, it's, it's not per officer, it's the entire PD only has to hit fifty-five quota points. So I feel like you're misunderstanding, right?
I'm not. I don't think I misunderstood, no, you're fine, I, I don't think I'm misunderstanding, I'm just saying, for those officers that are doing that work, does that not kinda work against the system? What, what is the purpose of the quota system?
What, what purpose is it?
Control of the PD.
To incentivize the issues that people have brought to the mayor and myself over the past couple of weeks that they think are issues since we represent the will of the people.
I don't think most people are gonna come forward and state that attempted first degree murder though is an inherent issue.
I don't think attempted first degree murder should take three weeks to investigate.
Well, to be fair, it's been about three weeks since Tessa stabbed me in the throat.
I'm, I, I am going to refrain from comments on that, because I do think that that's a big level of disrespect to the people that are injured. I, I think inherently what people are gonna see are traffic citations, joyriding, things that you see every day. I don't think attempted first degree murder you see every day.
Flop, when's the last time we went to senior buns?
I was about to say, I'm like, are you kidding me?
I'm playing, I'm playing, I'm playing. I mean, okay, I'm just gonna say it, all right?
Speak.
We lost thirty-six dollars an hour, thirty-six dollars an hour can kiss my ass.
Thirty-six dollars an hour!
Lenny, 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 Lenny.
Thirty-six, it's only thirty-six.
Thirty-six dollars an hour can kiss my ass, okay? But I understand the, the reverse side of the issue is not that we only lost thirty-six dollars an hour, it's about the trend in an economy in which it seems as if the rest of the city is, uh, progressing and keeping in line with inflation, and then people are, are, you know, obviously upset about that, given that you wanna have an actual life outside of being as part of the PD. Okay, I, I think that's pretty, pretty reasonable, that's a pretty reasonable assessment of the entire situation. These fifty-five points, I could wipe my ass with these fifty-five points and get it in a week, or in a day, by myself, okay? I, I think fifty-five points is gonna be easy as shit to hit. We do that for one week, show the city council that we actually do our jobs, and then they're gonna fix our pay, right?
What, yeah, what happens if we meet this quota, huh?
Your pay increases by five percent each week that you continue to hit it.
What if we go past?
I'll, I'll, I'll play, I'll play devil's advocate real, real quick.
So sure, you're joining the race.
Ninety, ninety-eight plus five is?
Lenny, stop, Lenny, please, I don't wanna have a positive age.
Hundred and three, hundred and three.
Hundred and five, sounds like it.
Wait, so we're gonna get a raise?
If you do this, yes, you will get a raise.
Oh!
These are clear actionable goals that you can meet in order to get more money. Most people would call this as a path, uh, a very transparent forward path to growth.
With all due respect, I've, I, I mean, I see you're playing a little bit of a numbers game here. You give a, a widespread, you know, tax reduction on income, but reduce ours, so technically, I mean, it's still a ten percent cut. Because it is, it is a global change, it's not like, oh, well, we gave just you an income tax reduction, and then a pay reduction on top.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's, that's the inflation shit I was talking about, yeah. So that's, it's reasonable that people are, you know, obviously, they don't, they don't feel good about it. But the truth is, is look, we just do this shit for a week, and we just keep doing it, because I'm telling you, fifty-five is nothing. Like, this is easy as shit.
See, I don't, I don't have an issue with something like this, a quota where we can increase our pay. I think there should be objective and goals to do so. I just, it feels like the PD is constantly being kicked down, you know, you guys are doing an awful job. You know, it's like, it's like poking somebody with a stick nonstop, and that's playing devil's advocate as far as the perspective of some officers, because they do go out there and try their best, right? And then I've been constantly being told, you're all doing a poor job, do better, right? And it's just, it gets to the point to where it's like, what should do, you know?
Well, I mean, look, we.
I, I just wanna say, other jobs in the city are also having their income evaluated, you are not the only ones. All right, we're in the mid, middle of a massive budget evaluation and overhaul at this time, all right? You are not the only ones affected, I know you might feel like you are right now, but there are other people with other jobs and.
I have something to say.
Yeah, okay, sure.
Well. I know Flop kinda touched on this, but I'm gonna use a, I have something to say.
Yeah, okay, sure.
Well. I know Flop kinda touched on this, but I'm gonna use a, well.
Wait, does anybody have any food or I'm gonna pass the fuck out?
I do, I do, actually, believe it or not, I have some food.
I got some seeds, if you will.
More like an edge case, because, uh, not every cop's.
I'll give you the sixty-four dollars or the fuck it is I owe you for this.
That, uh, take the level of need that he needs to put into, but on a daily basis, I see the will of the people is not wanting to be stabbed at burger places, and I would much rather stop someone.
Radio Jake.
Who has stabbed someone at a burger place than harass Win Song for having the adoption fraud.
But, but yeah, Duncan, you can go stop those guys, meet Eclipse, we'll get these points easy.
So I'm gonna give Win Song adoption fraud once.
Me, me stopping someone, hold on, Orin, let me go. Me stopping someone that stabbed someone else is more for the will of the people than harassing someone who says that's, you know, that's my X, Y, and Z relative.
Oh, okay, so you find that prosecuting, uh, adoption fraud is just simply harassing people? Are you saying that you disagree with the penal code and the charges that are written?
I'd rather go for the zero, zero point quota of stopping someone from stabbing someone at a ten point quota of a citation.
I'm not upset with the money cut, to be fair, and I'm not upset with the quota, but I'm, I'm inherently with Duncan on this.
Yeah, this isn't about the money, it's, oh, Orin, let me cook.
Sorry.
Hold on, eh, 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 this isn't about the money or the whatever, it's trying to change the PD's priorities from being for the will of the people to whatever the mayor's office.
The mayor is the will of the people, he was elected, you're not.
So, I mean, like I said, I mean, adoption fraud being down there at ten, the optics behind that is what? The more money behind it, it can generate for the state, the more points we can get. It can easily get weaponized in a pretty bad way because you're thinking about the points. You're not thinking about police work. Are you making a difference?
I understand what you're saying.
Are you trying to chase numbers?
If I'm, if I may, I think the, the, the money thing, I don't have a problem with the, the idea of hitting the point, the quota points or whatever, with this, I agree that we're gonna hit it, it's not a problem. It's more of a visceral reaction than a logistical.
Because not all the charges have some sort of quota point attached to them within the penal code that you can then meet just because you happen to get lucky on that charge.
I don't think it's a matter of like, I, I think it's just quota points are now what people are gonna be talking about, about your workload, how, how are you doing? Oh, well, how many quota points do you have? But that doesn't represent it, is, is, is kinda the, the, I think what people are kinda looking at it.
Why should I spend my time talking to people and I can just go and meet these quota points for my PD, right? Shouldn't that be the main focus, so we can get a PD, uh, pay increase?
I, I, I still, I still, I'm still failing to see why actual assaults are less quota points than a third degree speeding ticket. What does that say about the will of the people? You care about people's lives in this city? Or is it the budget?
I'm gonna be honest, um, when I made a nine-one-one call and it took thirty minutes to officers to respond, uh, I don't know where your priorities are. But this is what the mayor is setting as your priorities.
I'll, I'll answer that since, uh, I was actually there for that. There were two of us on duty and we rushed up to, to Sandy to talk to you and get, and get information. This is about, uh, what was his name? Rohan, right?
N- no.
Yeah, there were two of us on duty.
There's been more than one, it wasn't about that one.
Now look at us now, so we can live in the past.
It was when I got these on my head.
There were still like four of us on duty.
There were about four cops on duty for that, I was one of those officers.
As I say, I don't know what the priorities are or what they have been.
You can live, you can live in the past about the leadership and what numbers we have, but you look in this room right now, we're a little bit bigger now, so we can live one month ago, or we can move forward, and this is not the way to move forward. This is just using us to push an agenda.
And, uh, Shabon, we're not getting mad at you, I think we're expressing how we feel, so we're trying to communicate to you our feedback, right? Some of it is valid and some of it is just us complaining about different things, right?
I think you're saying that sucks, I really do appreciate your professionalism.
Yeah, I'm not mad at you or the mayor, I'm just trying to give you my honest feedback on the whole thing, and I just worry that officers will start looking at things as points instead of, you know, community policing or proactive policing, which we need. But the most, the most important priority right now should be numbers, should be recruitment, should be trying to get, uh, more officers on duty so we can handle our calls, so proactive policing can be second nature, it's a lot of officers and not to worry about responding to seventy-sevens all the time.
Some quota points for training people, get more people out there, then we get more, you know, effective work.
We're actually looking at, uh, bonuses, uh, for training. So that is something that we are considering, but it's not gonna be underneath the quota program, they're gonna be two separate issues and two separate rewards.
Priority is now being moved to, uh, instead of, if someone's being stabbed, that we need to focus on adoption fraud or we don't, or we lose our money instead of the stabbing.
What the fuck?
Stabbing is a zero, zero quota points.
Quote of points.
Duncan, we're a shit poster in afterlife or in life before that?
It gets you a raise, McNulty, it gets you a raise.
Oh!
For the whole PD, for the whole PD.
What you're telling me is this is a classroom now, and we're fucking children getting gold stars for doing our job, and when we get enough gold stars, we get a raise? Wow, great!
Sounds like the rest of the city.
So it's like the rest of the city, exactly!
Now we're like sanitation and all that, where.
The problem is, McNulty, the problem is, is that it's prioritizing various different things that go against our values.
I don't give a shit what it fucking prioritizes, I don't do my job for gold fucking stars to raise my pay, fuck you. What, what is this, weekly, monthly, or what?
Weekly, across the whole PD, not on an individual basis, everybody's points add up towards a total.
Let's say we fall short, what happened? Let, let's say two weeks, we fall short.
Nothing, nothing would happen as far as I'm aware, it's just your pay will, your, your pay will just stay where it's at, which is slightly the way.
It will get lowered, I heard what I heard.
Our pay will get lowered if you don't reach this quota.
Yep, or if he gave you system, it gets lowered.
Okay, so let's say, uh, two weeks in a row, we lose this quota and our pay gets cut.
Okay.
Unless we're off to on duty.
By the way, it's already been cut a little bit.
Oh, I know.
All right.
Okay.
McNulty, do you feel like you're being condescending to you right now? Do you feel like I'm condescending to you?
It is kind of, it is kind of, well, I mean, he's been disrespectful to us.
Yeah, I'm asking right now.
No, 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 I don't get, I don't, I don't give a shit about whether he's being condescending or not.